It's all right.
Yeah, yeah. Good problem with the way you look at it. Wow, what is this word?
No good.
No. No good. No. Well, you didn't have to say you don't have a lot of time reading.
Mm-hmm.
No.
No.
I'm checking my, my desk. Not my desktop, but there. I've paid my man, it's not really difficult. And also feel kind of like, you know, that's what I'm getting married for. That's what gives it that, feels frustrating. Get that out of my mind. Very specific moving on soon.
It's six thirty, as everyone's saying. Have a moment of silence and then DeWitt will say the page.
Attention, so move, boy.
My diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, an underdog, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
So I call the meeting to order and the declaration of conflict per the C- per TCA Code forty-nine dash two dash two oh two. Board of Education members who have relatives per the statute. Relatives mean spouse, parent, parent-in-law, child, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, grandparent, grandchild, brother, sister, uncle, aunt, nephew, niece, or any person who resides in the same household as you, employed by the system, or ask to raise your hand to identify yourself. Do you certify that the votes that you make tonight will be in the best interest of the school system, regardless of the effect that your vote may have upon the employment of your relative or relatives? Say aye, dey.
Aye, dey.
Eight thirteen dash twelve on the second sheet of your agenda. Delete that item off. There is evidently a problem and the tenants don't want to sign until a problem is corrected.
Which one?
The approval lease agreement and liability waiver with Teleco U-Sports. Eight thirteen twelve.
So who doesn't want to sign? The Lily?
The Lily. They have an issue with a cooler, so that's all on that right now. Let's just come up six fifteen.
So we, we met Charlie for a meeting together with Teleco U-Sports, Mr. Daniel, Ms. Becky. And so we were here, Doris attended, and they had some, uh, they had some concerns. And they expressed their concerns and you know, when you're negotiating, you try to look for the win for everyone. And we then put what we felt like were the wins or the compromises in there. And we also went to the building administrator who has to manage that facility, Ms. Hunt. And Mrs. Hunt and them need somewhere for their games to put their supplies. And so there are only two coolers in that room and there seems to be difficulty. The U-Sports makes money because they sell drinks every week from those, uh, during practice and et cetera. That's a moneymaker for them. But for them to have two coolers, Mrs. Hunt would have to pick up everything out of a cooler and take it into the building and then bring it back. And I think the coaches and the people running that say, it's too much on us, you know? And I think her coach may be saying, it's just, you're, you're asking us to do just a little bit too much. And so she's nervous that, you know, you want to look for the win. We're putting a lot on staff members right now. And so we need to get both groups at the table at the same time. Because I was saying, there are two coolers. Could one group have one and one group have the other? Uh, Mrs. Hunt said that was fine, but that is not amiable to Teleco U-Sports. They said that wouldn't work for them. So I've got to get them back to the table to try to make sure I can get a win for both sides. So with that-
We have changed at least three times.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question about the lease?
Yes, sir.
Uh, over on page three, it says that we'll, uh, uh, add, we'll put the bleachers in L.A. name.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how are we going to do that when we don't, we haven't talked about replacing them and we don't have the money to do that by now?
So we won't do that until we actually get the money. We have a proposal tonight that Phillip is going to share with you guys. Mrs. Hicks has a way, if you want to, that we can. If not, we will not be able to, and I shared that with them.
That'd be taken out of this lease.
It wa- it, we won't be able to comply with that. So that's the Doris question, is that he's saying, you know, let's just say they decide that they're not going to repair the bleachers. In this contract, it says we will repair the bleachers, which is a good point.
And they would use, they indicated in the meeting, they would use the bleachers as they work.
They did, because they said they were under the same regulations. Is that a liability issue for us, though?
If it's unsafe, it's liability and we let them use them and it's unsafe, it's liability. So we should stir them up, tape them off or something, put a sign or something, because that is a liability. Bleachers are unsafe. Can they accept liability, Doris?
It's in there.
It's in that they, if we don't replace them, they can say, we'll use them as, and we'll accept liability. They can get their own insurance.
We have that, they have liability insurance. We have that, uh, they will hold us harmless from injuries or anything like that, so.
If they would hold the U-Sports responsible, they fell down to get in there and get hurt, they would lose because we won't, okay?
So they couldn't countersue that situation at all?
But it's in there that they would protect, indemnify, and save us harmless from any liability or expense.
Okay. But we can still be safe.
Oh, sure.
I know-
They do have, have insurance, so I don't know if-
Anytime we've ever used school facilities, we've had to go out and get our own insurance that clears-
Yeah.
But I don't know if we talk to them.
Thank you. So we take that off for tonight until they can get everything situated out.
So we will put them on a facilities use agreement for another month until we can come to, uh, till we can negotiate?
It, they just can't use the bleachers until, unless, unless their insurance does that, Doris. I mean, I know-
I haven't seen the reason.
I've had to buy insurance, anytime I've ever had a camp, a place that I've had to buy my own insurance that took care of all the liability. Can we still be sued, DeWitt? Yes, I mean, they can sue regardless, but I've always had to do that. And it got, and it gets quite expensive. So they just can't use them unless they have their own insurance, I'm, that's why I'm, am I-
Well, the bleachers are closed anyway, so yes, sir. So when we do the facility use of agreement, Doris, do you recommend or suggest that we just write that piece in? Or that maybe Miss Blair adds that to the document?
You put it in there and you can say they have to provide it with that before they even practice. That insurance.
I don't think he, I don't think he's meaning the insurance, if I understand you correctly, Mr. Wees.
I'm just talking-
He's saying, he's talking about them getting on the bleachers.
Bleachers.
So he's saying in the use of facility agreement, he would like it in there that they're not to use them because they're-
Unless they have their own insurance, is that, that's the way it was. I've not, I had a ball camp in three years, so it may have changed.
Dennis.
Thank you.
Under new business, add, and... I hate adding these, but eight thirteen sixteen, post in the paper a job opening for our school board attorney.
Eight, now, eighteen thirteen sixteen.
Add that on there.
Eighteen-
We want, we need to add that on there.
Eight thirteen sixteen?
Yeah.
A, you'll make it B or what?
No, you got eight thirteen fifteen, we're going to add, oh, I see what you're saying.
That's under O business.
Eight, eight thirteen fifteen A.
Okay.
Under new business.
Eight thirteen-
Fifteen A.
Fifteen, oh, there you go.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent and regular agenda?
So who?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Eight thirteen fourteen, approval of the minutes from the July ninth twenty twenty regular board meeting? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, likewise, and the ayes have it. Eight thirteen five, approval of the August twenty twenty budget amendments. Do I have a motion?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to add in here, uh, when I talked with our director today, anytime we have a budget amendment, I'd like to know the whys of it. Uh, why, uh, Jo, let's say Jo has, uh, she don't have, she don't spend her fifty thousand dollars and they want to move it to my department. I, I would like to know the whys of all these budgets, and most of them I understand. But I'd like to have that, um, response or whatever, uh, so help me understand that better.
So, so just so we can get you exactly what you want, at the bottom, one of the things, when I came along, we started doing them like this and putting a justification. What you're saying is you need some additional narrative here-
Yes.
About why. So one or two simple sentences, don't do that. If it takes me two pages, make sure I got it all lined up and detailed.
That I didn't spend the money for cause, you need the money for cause.
Sandra, do you understand? And will you make sure that Ms. Gale is aware that he wants a lot more detail? I think what he's asking for is a lot more detail.
Yes, yes. I understand the reasons why.
Just, we go, you, Sandra, you're just going to get that and show done and we, we don't want to strain at our meeting anymore, all right? Go, okay.
No, I'll see that with you in a minute.
Okay.
It'd be just like at the bottom of these.
Because, Mr. Wees, we really changed that for our last year when I came on and he tried to do that, so we can give you a little more. That's our problem.
Okay, I just, I'd like to know the whys and I, I know over a period of time, over four or five years, if I'd been in the same department, I would, I would know pretty close what kind of money I need and I would, I'd like to know why.
That's what it's all about.
There's fifty thousand dollars at that door, where, why someone underestimating, especially if we've been here a while.
Dawn.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you see eight thirteen five in your packet? That's what I look at, then I, if I have questions about it, then I call and ask. It, it's pretty-
That, well, that was on our iPad, wasn't it?
That was in our, yes.
Yes, I, I read, I read through that and I called her and she explained most of that to me, yes.
I think he's wanting to know why, like, why did they have an overage, why did they have a shortage?
Yeah, why?
That's what, that way it's to help understand more about the budget.
Okay.
You're, I'm, uh, I, I'm, I don't know about other people, but I've asked that question. Why is it we have the biggest, a lot of money, I guess, in the budget of the county? Why is it money being spent here, here? And I don't have an answer for people when they ask me that and I'd like to have an answer for them. I think, and I, I personally think that's legitimate.
Well, there's so many times that they have to move it from here to here to here and, and it, it does get confusing, but-
Eddie's rubbing Peter's face, Paul.
Sir, our budget is so tight and I, I would just say one of the things that, you know, Gale said, uh, because our budget is so tight, uh, when they forecast, anytime we see any savings, like today we talked, we would, we had savings because we had sub money because of COVID nineteen. We would not normally have that much money. I think in the spring, we even trade moved lots of money, but it was because of overtime, he didn't have to pay. But I don't think that's an unreasonable request. I don't, I don't think it'll be a problem for us to do it and we're getting better at it anyway because it wasn't something we did before. We've been getting better and better at it and to be honest with yous, Sandra will tell you, we worked on these even more just when they were first submitted by finance. I asked for even additional information to be put in it, so we can put some more. I don't have a problem with that.
I think it's kind of like, you know, I discussed with you about having a more detailed per department, like, you know, it listed who all got paid out of that department and everything. And it started with their starting budget and they listed everything. So if you have that and could present it quarterly by department, it would show us, okay, they're, they're right on track or hey, there's going to be short money and, you know, it's just a good, maybe for us to understand it better, I guess.
So I have a quarterly meeting, actually, uh, and, and I don't know, and I don't want to take over for finance. Like, I have a quarterly meeting with Gale because the same questions that you guys are asking, those are questions I had in my quarterly meeting with Gale. I think Gale is probably, uh, very technical because she's great. Do you think it would help if Gale and I co-present and go through that quarterly report with you guys? Because I did ask, uh, I remember you gave me sort of a person you had seen you liked. We're actually doing the same budget. Ours actually had a little bit more detail in it than the person that you told me you liked your budget.
Like Phillip's? Like, yeah, Phillip and, you know, every department here had to do a separate budget. DeWitt, I hear you keep everything, I got rid of everything, but, but they proceeded to do us a separate budget one year. It showed their budget had the breakdown and we had some questions on it because we didn't know that this person was paid out there. And it was so detailed, it was very nice, like new board members and like even Dawn and maybe John and Sharon could understand it better. So that's how far back it was.
So I, so Phillip actually used that last year when I came on and I was new and I asked everyone, actually his became the model and I asked everyone to use that. So what we could do again is say that, I don't know that, uh, it, I don't know that you want to see it quarterly, but we could send it to you then if you had questions, we could ask those questions, uh, about how that was running.
Okay.
And that's very different now from the budget as a whole, which is a quarterly report that Gale gives. So let me untangle it. You want to know about the staff and the employees and how that's going each quarter and then you want to know the budget and operations as a whole and how that's going.
And then like, he would list his projects, you know, in hopes of projects, but then of course, there's always something to come up. Just like, you know, the Jackie in the nurses department had one, cafeteria had one, you know, every department had one. I think we even had one, a central office one, you know? It, it was very detailed and it's, you know, explained a lot.
That'd be for more transparency, too.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I mean, those are the questions I'm asking, too.
Yeah.
So let us, let us continue to keep, keep working on it. And, uh, Sandra, you understand kind of what she's saying and then we can go from there because I think he has a great model. It might not be exactly correct the way you want it the first time, but then we can get better with the next one.
Is that, is that what you were explaining to me, uh, Jo, how you understood it in the past?
How I understood the budget. You know, and I, you've asked me before, how do you understand it? I said, well, I don't sometimes.
Call and ask, that's all I'm saying.
And, you know, I'll call finance, I'll talk to Libby Gale, whoever I can get ahold of, I've talked up here, I've asked questions. But I think everybody would understand it. It was very detailed, wasn't it, DeWitt?
Oh, yeah.
Do you remember it's on?
Oh, yeah.
And it was, it just self-explanatory, very, very nice.
Yeah, like you said, it does make it very transparent.
You know, IT had one, you know, IT had one, every department over here had one and it was very, you understood it.
Thank you.
So before we proceed further, does everybody understand the twenty twenty budget amendments? Any more have any questions? I've got a motion and a second. If no more discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. New business, eight thirteen six, approval of the school and county fees for the twenty twenty-one school year. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
What are these fees?
I'm trying to find it right here.
Science department and-
It's like work.
Was that on, was that on the iPad?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Okay, I, I read through them, now I know what you're talking about, I read through-
The rule of them, Kent Hutter asking for the fees for the kindergarteners in Madisonville?
Yes, thank you for sparking my mind back there.
No more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, likewise, and the ayes have it. Eight thirteen seven, approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Monroe County Schools disciplinary authority.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no, and the ayes have it. Eight thirteen eight, approval to accept an eight thousand dollar grant from the East Tennessee Foundation for ultrasound innovation project for CTE and STEM students. This will be paid over two years, four thousand dollars each.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Eight thirteen nine, approval of the following exceptional education contracts for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, Smith Best Lines, Douglas Cherokee Head Start, Stellar Therapy Services, Stellar Therapy Services Add-on, and Grace Rehab Center Incorporated. Do I have a motion, will you approve?
Make a motion, approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Who, who do these contracts go through that decided these?
So these are professional services for our students.
I mean, you, you negotiated with them?
No, no, no. So Trey actually in our Department of Exceptional Ed, uh, goes through these and so he wanted me to-
No, I just asked, we, so we did try, people did-
So Trey works with them to, uh, define what they need, what our services are needing, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Eight thirteen ten, Mr. Philip Carroll, Facilities and Maintenance Director, approval about door lighting contracts for Fort Loudon for the following Sequoia High School baseball field, Sequoia High School football field, and Teleco Plains High School and football field.
Yes, uh, basically, we just need to get a board approval, um, as it says there, for the lighting contracts. These are the contracts that we've always had with Fort Loudon for them to maintain, uh, the actual lighting, uh, the circuitry for those, uh, the high bulbs lights. Uh, it just fell out in there that anything leading up to that, to that service, which we're responsible for, just like always, uh, and myself and Ms. Matthews have, uh, we've talked about it, reviewed everything and everything looks to be up to par. So we just need some approval tonight.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Eight thirteen eleven, approval of school resource officer contract for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one with the Monroe County Sheriff's Department, City of Madisonville, and Town of Vonore.
Make a motion, approve?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Eight thirteen thirteen, Charlie Lee. Ms. Charlie.
There he comes, he's walking down the road.
He's going to talk to us about a request for approval to award bus route number six to Mr. Butch Davis as recommended by the Transportation Committee. Request approval of the following new bus drivers, Larry Fordham, KB Busing, Larry McCall, McCall Busing, and request for a middle school countywide golf coach supplement of five hundred dollars.
So move.
Wait a minute, Charlie's going to talk to us.
So he's going to talk about the lease, too?
He's going to talk about all that right there.
Uh, well, it's personally just the first thing to be met last week and, uh, the agreement with Butch Davis, I think it'll be a very good contract. We've taken the bus contractor family, he follows the contract, will bring it back for use. So I think they'll do a very good job.
This is one contract?
Route six. We're going to need to know.
We'll do each one separately, I think.
So move, motion.
Have a motion for the first one? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Number two, Charlie.
Okay, we, um, request approval to the, these two new bus drivers, Larry Fordham, he's a long-time bus driver, that's from Loudon County. Yeah, Larry McCall, he just retired just a couple months ago from Knox County Schools. And, uh, he just got his license and he's ready to drive.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion?
Are they driving some of our bus routes that were short on?
Yes.
They just take care of the empty bus routes that we had on.
What, what area were they driving?
Larry Fordham would be driving in Swinwater and Larry McCall in Vonore, St. Maxwell, they'd be running.
And who are they working for?
Um, McCall Busing, that's Leonard McCall's husband.
Oh, okay.
And then Larry Fordham is, uh, Baker's, got their paper in Swinwater.
So they've had background checks and everything's good?
Yes.
And the older routes, did you say, we still have? Five in Telkot?
So we aren't just, make care of Swinwater. And then, uh, do a last, seven.
Now, is some of Telco's due to COVID quarantine? Or is it just, we don't drive?
They just, they stepped back, usually COVID.
They, they put on.
Drive, of course, Bill started, they were just scared to drive. They were scared for their life. And they're older and, I'd say the point is-
Thank you, Charlie.
Have a motion and second on this. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, likewise, the ayes have it. Can I say something before we go to number three? It wasn't particularly on that particular motion, but it's hard to get bus drivers.
Oh, gosh.
And I don't know if y'all are aware of what they're having to do now to get someone certified to drive. They have to take them to Murfreesboro or Chattanooga and-
It's hard.
And they're driving the big buses down there and I don't know if the board would allow them to drive one of the smaller buses. I mean, it'd probably be a little less cost and fuel. I mean, it would help our contractors out some and it would help us out some if we could get some bus drivers.
It, it's almost like a money market. They gotta go three and four times what they ever get approved, it's, it's crazy.
You said Murfreesboro?
Yes.
Does anybody know anybody in Murfreesboro, because they gotta have a thousand buses down there. We might contact one of their people and say, hey, can we?
Don't know anybody, I don't, I don't know nobody down there.
I, I, um, let me reach out to some other superintendents in the area and see if we can't develop any sort of relationship. Um, I would imagine that, that she says probably could be able to get three walls, we're going to take one of our smaller buses.
And I can also contact the, uh-
Plus the distance.
Check the nation directions to Murfreesboro lately.
Yeah. Sure, that, surely, there was something there that, that we-
I thought, I thought there was one, a testing site in Bristol or-
Strawberry Plains, I used to be, but-
Yeah, that's right.
What, now tell us what happened about Strawberry Plains, because our bus drivers did feel like that Murfreesboro, it was, uh, more difficult.
To Strawberry Plains, yeah.
Strawberry Plains is very difficult.
They'll dispel you for nothing.
And I could give you an example, we had an employee that went to Strawberry Plains and he did his pre-trip and he was done. And that was then, he would go and drive. Well, the lady said, are you done with your pre-trip? He said, yes, sir. She said, no, uh, no, you failed. He just walked away.
See, I've heard somebody needs to do something about that lady.
They didn't tell him what he did wrong. And then we had another employee go the next month. They did the same thing and that employee said, no ma'am, you're not leaving, you coming when I did wrong. And he, I mean, he made her, he told her that he did wrong. But they're just, it's just not a good setup.
That change takes about a month to get, even to get in, to do.
That changed when Joe was saying, when they, what they did is-
It changed when, Joe, when they, what they did is they put a chaplain to it and changed around because that wrecked his and Chattanooga. And, uh, it made it tougher.
But I'll tell you what happened, uh, about three months ago. He had a contractor drive his bus to Chattanooga, right, right through his route. He took his student ready, but he hired. They got down there and they said, sorry, we can't do you, it's my calling city. We can't do that. So before he left there, he sent an email to Nashville complaining he drove back to Nashville. He got a call from Nashville that said, go back, we're gonna do you. He drove the bus back to Chattanooga. They got the bus, the man said, I don't know why y'all came back, it was a hundred percent people hell, first time. He failed, and they drove the bus back. So we went to Chattanooga and back twice. For that. I mean, that's what we're dealing with.
And we have drivers that have people that are ready, but they just can't get them, they can't pass it.
It's a major, it's a major practice in state. I mean, it's countrywide, but I mean...
Well, who, who is in charge of these testers?
State.
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 Which, which, which branch of the state?
Department of Transportation.
State Department of Transportation.
Okay.
Do they get money each time?
Peter.
Yeah, you have to pay each time.
They charge them, they're playing, I guess, firstly, I think we...
That's why I think it's money time, it's paying to go down.
So there, you know, if there's any way that we can not reach out and maybe help our contractors get people, it would be...
Well, isn't Lowell Russell on the Transportation Committee in the state?
I don't, I don't know.
I'm gonna call her.
We should reach out to them though.
I think, I feel safe here.
Yeah.
Pull some strings.
Because, you know, I've had complaints from Telco already about, you know, the buses, and I told them, I said, hey, we're doing the best we can do right now. I said, we, we're having combined routes, and I said, it, it's taking a little bit longer. Well, my child is list by minutes, but, you know, I'm sorry.
Let him walk.
I know what, uh, John Rick, we should have to get the Barrett five star. We took them to some Tennessee moonshine and then, and I would work, I would work. More eating fish and I'll do that.
Mm-mm, I'm not gonna do that.
That's, that's a joke, but it's true, that's true.
So eight thirteen three. Request for a middle school countywide golf supplement of five hundred dollars. Charlie?
Hey, I'll tell you what this is, kind of brought this on is, is we've had less and less kids coming on these golf teams, so like, for example, Masco Middle School was past year had two golfers from Masco Middle and from Vonore. They also had a couple pretty terrible companies. So we really need a county golf team, and not a Masco Middle, Vonore Middle. And all these kids can come and go to the farm.
A county middle school golf team?
Yeah, because it's not enough at each school now.
So how many, how many kids do we have in middle school right now that is playing these?
Uh, we don't know, the senior's not here yet, but...
The last year was five. What, and then why?
Yes, five last year.
Five last year.
And one was from Catholic grade?
He was gonna play, but for some reason he didn't. But he's a very good golfer, he's a helpful student.
Is there enough kids signed up to justify this?
I think so.
Or are we hoping it will be?
I think it will be. I think you'll get more as a county team is. A lot of kids, like, his parents don't know. If they're at one school, they don't want to go to another school, wearing their colors and play. That wouldn't happen here, it would be a Monroe County team. And the good thing is, this gives these kids, like, match play experience, hitting play golf experience, so when they do get to high school, they've done it. They've done match play.
It was a false report.
Charlie, do you have a coach?
Mm-hmm.
So we got one...
Randy Benson, he's been a coach for two years.
We got one coach, right?
Yes.
For each middle school. For Royal Vale, Catholic grade.
No, this is from county one.
We've got one coach, really, just right now. He coached last year.
But he'll let all students from every middle schools be on that team?
So he's fine with that?
Yes, that's what he wants.
So moved.
Aye, second.
Have a motion and second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Charlie.
All right.
Okay, wait just a minute.
I loved him last, but...
But in addition to a motion, your suggestion gone that they not use the bleachers.
Unless, unless they can have, they have the insurance to cut there.
Just say we don't let them use it.
Okay. If that's your, okay. I make a motion that they're allowed to use facilities, they just have to block off that section of bleachers, uh, because Telco has one good side, and Swinwater has two good sides. Vonore has, uh, they have one good side, don't they?
The middle schools are both sides of...
So Vonore Youth Sports are the only team, is the only people that play on that, and they said they would take care of it all. So they didn't, they didn't want, they didn't, they just signed their lease, because they, but see, the difference with the junior high is we have two different organizations trying to share. So that's why we're negotiating. But Vonore Youth Sports, they signed it, remember, we approved it in our special call.
Just, I, I make a motion, they can use facilities with, with bleachers that are condemned, they, they can't use them, they can use lawn chairs.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? The ayes have it.
All right, did we vote on this? Eight thirteen, thirteen three?
Yeah.
About...
Yeah, we done that.
Okay, well, I probably said that I didn't mark it up.
I think that's it. Eight thirteen fourteen. Dr. Jason Miller, the student board members.
Uh, yeah, we've been doing this for the last, uh, three years, I think, and so just due to COVID, not being in the board room for the last few months, uh, this kind of got put on the back burner, I guess you could say, but I just wanted to, you know, hopefully this board can continue to do this in the future. I think it's a good thing that we do, so, uh, normally the way we do this is just get a motion. We've already got the, um, applications and stuff ready, so hopefully that wouldn't be a hard thing to get out. And this would just be for one, uh, senior, uh, member, uh, to come on board and just be a student representative in a non-voting matter. And, um, uh, of course, you just have to get a committee. If you decided to do this, you just have to get a committee as well. So I make a motion that we would continue to do this.
Second. Motion and second. Is there any discussion?
I think it's a good program. You know, I don't care to help continue with it.
It is, they can add that to their resume somewhere down the road that they set on. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? The ayes have it. Eight thirteen fifteen. Ms. Jill Pierce, Technology Consultant.
Okay, she's coming in now. So if you guys will recall, we have an entire, uh, one-to-one plan. And we have a phenomenal staff. Y'all know I can't brag on our staff enough. But, uh, there are things that you want to get what you would think an expert, somebody that has experience. Uh, many of you have reached out to me in one-to-ones and said, I thought we already had a one-to-one plan. Or I thought we had already voted for a one-to-one plan. What happened? And what happens a lot of times when you start new initiatives, if they don't start off appropriately, and you don't have any expertise with the one-to-one, they kind of butter away. This is too much money for us not to implement successfully our one-to-one plan. So we scoured the state, even my staff, they were kind of skeptical. They said, Doc, we think we got it, we think we got it. But as I started to ask them questions, they had answers, but they were kind of like, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, because they had never done it. So fortunately, we interviewed a few people, and in our interview, we're trying to find a professional, uh, consultant to help us. Mrs. Pierce, who is actually the Technology Director in Mon, not McMinn, McMinn. McMinn County was able to, she has released dates in her contract from them. We were able to secure her using our Title I funds for professional development and technology implementation to help her, I mean, to help us understand how do you do a one-to-one successfully? She's put together how many one-to-ones, how many school?
Few, few school districts.
So more than one, and she has had extremely successful implementation plans. So we have an expert, you know, an expert lives eight miles outside of town, so we've got an expert. And so this is Jill, and I asked her to come and start to share with us the planning because we anticipate by November, or as Mr. Wee says, January, these computers will be coming in. So I hope I set it up. Did I leave anything out?
Yeah, you really put pressure on me to be successful now, so we'll go through there. So good evening. Some of you may recognize me, I presented at TSB A before, I did some of the technology things. I've been in McMinn, uh, County for nine years, that's home for me. I was at Loudon County for sixteen years, and then I worked with school districts all around the country and doing training and stuff for about five years in between those two jobs. Uh, as my daddy said, I just, I get a little wanderlust under me and kind of go there. I'm an East Tennessee farm girl, so adult that. Uh, most of us have the new look, which is called the mask head, you know, so we're all dealing with that. As long as I'm back from you, you guys okay if I pull masks, just because it's a little bit easier to hear me? I can project, that's not a problem, I'm a teacher. Uh, I, I want to be, uh, very clear here. Uh, I really appreciate, uh, the fact that the, the staff here in Monroe County has, uh, welcomed me very easily. But there, they've done the work. My job was kind of just the po-po's in it. Okay, that's kind of what, what my job is in a lot of cases. And I'm gonna tell you this, even in the most successful one-to-one, because of what's happened with COVID, there's just a lot of things that we're having to do in a rapid-fire motion that, that you can't prepare for. And I, and I'll give you some examples as we go through here, because it has changed how we do a lot of things with implementation. Typically with an implementation, plan for a year and you do that, where COVID has rushed that timeline a, a lot because of how we do remote students and those kind of things. We're doing things in McMinn County, uh, a lot faster than we normally do when we do deployments. We plan for a year and all that stuff, and so I want you to keep that in mind as we go through this and keep this in mind with your staffs here, that this staff is phenomenal, and I'm not saying that because of payment, because, uh, anybody that knows me for five minutes, I'm a pretty straight shooter. The second thing is that, uh, there's gonna be things that pop up that's happened with COVID, that's gonna really kind of have to, they're gonna have to be on their toes to change. We, we're in, uh, day four. The first day we started our remote school, we got inundated with calls from parents not knowing how to hook, even though we did training. And so we had to address that and those kind of things. So I want you as a board to really realize that they're gonna need time to go through these things, because it's gonna hit, and, and this is not like anything that we've ever seen before or ever will probably see in the future. And whatever lucky charm I can put on with that, okay? So let me go ahead and get started, looking at the PowerPoint ahead, and you can ask questions. Uh, we've got the whole staff here that's involved in this one-to-one that can answer questions. I don't want to be the one, I'm just gonna give you some of the highlights, and then we'll switch off. Bradley, are you on? Hey, Bradley?
Yes, I am.
Kelly, are you on?
I am. Yes.
All right. So when you talk about a one-to-one device initiative, the first thing is figuring out what device and what things that you need. And so we're gonna talk about some things you just need to know. Uh, one-to-one is a, is a unique term in the sense that a lot of people don't understand what that means. It's very simple, one computer for one child, one student, okay? The unfortunate thing about a one-to-one that you need to realize as a board and for the future is that is a continuous stream, because computers get old, those kind of things. So once you start that, you're in for it, for the game. And here's the, here's the reason we're doing this. Let's just set COVID aside and just say COVID didn't happen and talk from the standpoint of instruction, and then we'll come back to COVID if that's all right with you as a board. So the first thing is, children today have to have soft skills on the computer. They have to know how to turn it on, they need to know how to use applications, they need to know how to, and if you look at any kind of job, including, uh, minimum wage jobs, there's not any job anymore that they do not have to touch a computer. Construction, all these things, a plumber, they have to know how to use these soft skills when they do these things. Research says that if you can get a computer in a kid's hand at an early age, not to do everything, because you're gonna find with me, I'm kind of old school. They still need to know how to write, they still need to know how to read, they still need to know how to use a pencil. But this is the way that we're gonna have to look to educate these kids. So all the research says that we have to start them early on that. Most kids have. If you put a cell phone in most, uh, if you have small children, grandchildren, whatever, and you put a cell phone in their hand, you're gonna see immediately, they're gonna find things that you never knew your phone did, okay? So that's not the problem, but we need to channel that exploration to a point where they're using it for functionality, okay? Productivity, those kind of things, all right? Because it's great to play games, and some of those can be real advantage, but that's the reason for doing a one-to-one in a school. The second thing is, I want to go, uh, talk about tools. We talk about tools in the classroom, okay? Nothing replaces that teacher in the classroom. We all know that. That is the heart and soul, and our, we're a factory, all schools are factory. They're putting out children's minds. So it's very important as we start looking at this process that we think about this. But here's where the computer things. I always use the analogy, growing up, I learned how to use a handsaw, okay? Now, I'm pretty good at the handsaw, my daddy made me use it on farm, but I was really happy when he put a chainsaw in my hand, because I could do it in half time. That's kind of how we have to look at the difference in a computer based from them using a pen or something like that. Again, both important skills, but that's the reason that we want to start looking at. The other thing is, if you look at the top tools that kids need in association to help with RTI, or Spotsy Intervention, those kind of things, almost all of those are computerized. And so from that standpoint, to give those kids that extra help, uh, when you talk about exceptional children, special ed, I like that title better, exceptional children. When we talk about those kids, they tend to lean to be able to use computers, and also thinking about all types of adapted, uh, things for them that helps them read, all that. That's mostly computerized. So when we start looking at those populations that we're trying to help, typically having a computer that has certain, certain pieces of software are an advantage to you as a, as a, as a district and for those, uh, students that, uh, you're educating. Uh, engagement. More ways of engagement. And I just answered that with the first question, but I, you know, that power too is also about the engagement. Again, not gonna replace that teacher. A lot of people think when you go to a one-to-one, that you're trying to replace that classroom teacher. No, what you're doing is giving that teacher more avenues to do depreciating instruction. Uh, what I'm doing is I can, if I know Johnny needs this, and Patty needs this, and I do my instruction, I can, I can take those different tools on that computer and make sure I'm giving them the best when I don't have that time typically. You know, that I can assign those things while we're doing that instruction. And so that really helps us really try to educate those kids and have that individual education plan as we go through. Uh, communication tools. One of the things that happens in this, uh, those things is that once these kids learn that, then you're gonna have parents, typically in households, when they see those computers with a one-to-one initiative, you see other things go, they communicate more. You can use the communication as an email with a student, uh, that they, the parents can communicate. So if they don't have those in the household already, you're also building those, uh, skills for those communication tools for the whole family. So when we talk about communicating with our families, it can also build that up. And guys, we know that we have, you're in accounting and I'm in accounting, has a lot of areas that you can't get internet, cell signal, okay? You know, let me move here. If I need to get cell, uh, signal at my house, I have to go in the corner of my yard, okay? Which is really kind of funny, since I'm the head of technology in McMinn County. But it's where I live, and you know, and I've got satellite, I think it might be cheaper. I told my boss today that all of us rural schools, they go in together and buy satellite to provide internet to all these homes over us, and said, that might be even a cheaper thing than doing monthly from there. And he laughed at me, and I said, don't laugh. I said, it could happen. So how COVID nineteen has changed how we looked at one-to-one? The unfortunate thing about COVID and the way it's going now, and you guys know this, every school is looking about what happens if we have to go out again, okay? Now, none of us want to do that, kids need to be in school, okay? But the, the part of this that is so important, whether you get your computers now or later, is that we're building, because this is not gonna be the last time that we have something like this happen. The other thing is, a one-to-one allows us these type of things. Think about a family whose house, uh, is damaged in a storm, and those, those kids don't have a place to go, but they're in a hotel. If they have that device, they hook to the wifi, they could remote in. So it gives us lots of opportunities to give those kids education that we wouldn't normally, that'd be off the grid. Using it for COVID, think about quarantine. These families that get quarantined for a week or those kind of things, and all of us are dealing with that. We can put them in remote for that long. The teachers can do that. And again, this is something we're going to have to work through because none of us have experienced this. None of you boards have. That's the reason we have to be patient when we talk about these things. Being prepared for those future issues. That's what that one-to-one does. So as I met with the Monroe County Schools and the administrative team, they had their plan. And so our goal was to look at devices, those kind of things. Luckily, we had some funds that were coming through, and they, we, we kind of, and my job basically was to poke holes in some of the logistics. That's kind of where I, I kind of live. Uh, and again, I'm going to tell you, this is, this is a ever-changing process because you're going to go down one road with this, and then you're going to see that may not work in this particular area of this school, and they'll have to adjust. You know, Bradley and his team, they're getting their stuff together and are trying to go there. Kelly in the training, because it is, it is made up of so many parts when you do a one-to-one. And again, because of COVID, we've had to rapid response this that typically you wouldn't do in a normal situation. So the first thing they want to do, and at this point, I'm going to allow any of them, if they've got anything to add, just please speak up and, uh, we'll kind of go. So the big thing was forming an education technology committee that includes districts, school staff, county commissioners, board members to work through the transition of one-to-one district. Uh, this is also providing feedback, those kind of things. So as they build this, this is one of the things to make sure that we're, we're getting all our stakeholders involved in the success of this program. Any questions about that?
I want to just add to that, that it was so important to, for us to make sure that everybody's in the conversation. We want not just our team and you guys, but the people outside of the school system to see the process. Not just, okay, here's a plan. We made it pretty on paper. Here you go. What do you think? But see the process we went through, consulting with other places that have done this, looking at our possibilities with the logistics and the geography of our district. So we really, we know that it's an all-hands-on-deck opportunity. We will need ongoing support from the whole county, not just Dr. McClendon and those of us who are here in this building, but the whole community has to support this initiative for it to work. And that's families, that's our commissioners, that's, you know, everybody across the board. So we invite lots of input into the process so that people can see that there's a lot of effort put into it to try to do this the best way we can, knowing we're not in a great situation here, but the best way we can with what we have.
All right, so we're going to talk just a little. My bottom goal is that all students will have a Chromebook in grades five through twelve with appropriate support, protections, and training, and all students will have access to high-speed internet from home or near home, okay? So we want to talk about the short-term goals, and those are the ones, and I apologize for the size, that we want to make sure we got this in there. You know, our goal, provide Chromebooks to students in the middle and secondary grades, provide professional development to all faculty and staff, provide training to students, and robust information to parents and families on effective and appropriate use of Chromebooks for individual students. Ensure adequate monitoring, filtering, safety features as included and understood in all devices. So there's some laws that go into play when you have devices that go home. One is filtering, and we'll talk about that in just a second. I want to be conscious of your time, and I also want to make sure. And then evaluate the rollout system to continually improve the process in the future. This is probably one of the most important things. After you start your deployment, you've got to constantly be evaluating what's not working, what things do we need to change. And I want to say, I've, I've worked with a lot of districts, uh, your staff here with the leadership of Dr. McClendon and all that, they have really kind of looked at that, and they know that they may, you know, it's one of those things I may have to move around a little bit and, and adjust to this because you are very similar, uh, like with us in McMinn County. You have very different areas of the country in, in Monroe County that you may have to adjust how that deployment's done, okay? So, devices, Chromebooks, three thousand devices, cases, insurance, and white glove. So Bradley, do you want to explain white glove?
For the white glove service is essentially our vendor, Central Technologies, aiding us in the setup of the Chromebooks. Uh, obviously with three thousand devices coming in on a very short, um, amount of time to get them here and then out to students. The turnaround is just, it's not going to be possible. It's definitely out of hand. We did it all ourselves in-house. Uh, so Central will be helping us with that, and that's what that, uh, white glove is for.
And what they do with the white glove is there are several different filtering systems and other platforms that must be placed on here before they go out. So instead of Bradley and his little small band having to touch every device and put it on there, when you use a computer company, they have it already done, and they call it a white glove service because you're very close to plug and play. The other thing, don't think that Bradley and his team won't be doing that because they've got to make sure that all these kids have, uh, the licensing, they have their logins and all that, so it frees them up to work on that part of the project. So it's a way really deploying for the cost. It saves you from having to hire extra people to do that deployment. So in the long run, you actually save money if you look at that cost over the long term. And as, most boards know, that's, that's the bottom line. Where do we save costs, right? Security and safety. I'm going to take this because privacy is one of my big things, and I want, I don't want to waste your time on it. The thing I want you to be aware of it, by law, uh, you have several things. You've got the COPUS Act, you've got the Child Internet Protection Act and all that. By law, any device that the school system owns, if they provide for a device that goes on campus or off campus, filtering has to be applied. So that is filtering the internet, okay? They also have some things for management, inventory tracking. Obviously, you want to know who's got it. The thing that says gaggle up there, let me explain it. I have been a longtime gaggle user in my district. It actually monitors kids, what they put in chat, what they put in their email, and what they put on their Google Drive. So let me give you for instance, besides, uh, so in most cases, if a kid sends an inappropriate email, they send an email back to them immediately. They don't have to do that, says, "Hey, you broke our policy." Usually once, one of those, it cuts it. Then you've got that kid that posts something like a diary message. Where gaggle has been the saving grace in my career, because I've been dealing with them for about twenty years now in both my districts, is that let's say a kid does a letter that says that they're going to harm theirselves or something like that. They'll, you'd be surprised, kids will put that on their Google Drive using, uh, Google Docs. Well, it looks for those things, and if you get it, it sends that information to you. And then we've had three instances in my career over two school districts that we literally saved, uh, children from hurting themselves because it looked at those kind of things. So it, and they physically look at that and call you if it's something at a high tier. You said your tiers. So that right there, I know it looks like there's a cost there that may be a little high, but I want to tell you, there is no cost for human life, especially our children. So that right there is a five-year plan on that, and it is worth every penny. It will help. It also keeps, uh, the issue that they'll be notified if anything goes from there. So it's highly recommended, and they're one of the top companies that's been doing it the longest as far as bar. They do from electronic to actually human people monitoring those things. And it's all private. All the privacy of your children are protected, but you need to know that that's part of it, okay? Yes, sir.
The, uh, the payment for is a million bucks. Is this included in the million bucks?
No.
This is extra, correct?
Yes, sir. Okay. So when we talk about training, I'm going to turn this over to, uh, Ms. Kelly.
We have, we actually have been focused on training even before, uh, COVID started, and we realized, you know, we, we had a jumpstart on it, but not nearly enough. So over the summer, we trained over a hundred teachers, almost a hundred and twenty-six teachers, um, on Google apps. Uh, we started the, the, the process with one or two, actually two, Google-certified teachers in our district, and as of yesterday, we have forty-three. So I felt like that was a huge success. That's a, a little bit less than half of the people that went through the program. And, uh, we also have some training that we are going to be offering based on our purchase of the Chromebooks. Because of the number of Chromebooks we purchased, Google is going to provide us with some training from a company called EdTech Team, where they will provide, um, training at grade band levels so that teachers who, um, have never used Google Classroom and don't understand how it can be used in a primary classroom will get specific training on how to make that work for them, which is invaluable. And so we have that planned in August and September. So by the end of September, every teacher will have had some training in the, the chief distance learning apps that they need in the event that we do have to go out. We also have training on specific programs coming up. Uh, we, we have some training on EdNudity, which will be our virtual school platform, and we have some training on other applications that we will be using in, in, um, together with that.
So valuation, rollout, student, contingency, group process, and efficiency. So one way to do that is create that community, uh, to provide feedback on one-to-one. It's very important that you're talking to everybody, including students upfront. That's always sometimes that we forget that we need to talk to our students also because they're the ones that'll tell you if it's working or not better than anybody. So we, when, uh, we got together as with your team here, and we sat down, we talked about who do you need to talk to and those kind of things. We know community. We know leaders. We know teachers. We know admins. We know central office. But we also want to make sure we're talking to our students and see how that's going. And then as we do that, that will start identifying any areas of improvement that would need to be done. This will be a continuous process because once you start a one-to-one, it's almost impossible to stop, okay? Because once they have that device, you try to take it away from them, and I've got some examples of school districts that tried that, and, uh, you, you're talking about a revolt, okay? Because they, they have ownership into their devices. Now, I'm not going to lie to you. It's going to be, it's going to be tough, and you may have some things that come up. But the great thing about the way your team has looked at this here, and Bradley's team on the technology, and Kelly on the training, and of course, uh, and your leadership from Dr. Clinton, is that they're looking at this as this is a continual project. So we're going to start hard. Because of COVID, we're having to start a little faster than we expected. Obviously, schools were not expecting to have to wait on devices, okay? And they're literally on a slow boat from China. Literally, okay? Almost all of them. And I, I'm, I'm not making jokes. I'm not being funny. It's the truth, okay? Uh, uh, that, so the, so when we talk about feedback, just keep that in mind because at some point, there's always going to be somebody, and because of, just because of where COVID is, and we don't know where we're going to be with COVID when they actually get their devices, so they may have to, uh, you know, adjust accordingly depending on where they're at in their school system at the time. So I just want you as a board to remember that as we start, as they, as they start going through this process. So. So at the end of the day, there's a couple of things. I always love this because "Don't let what you cannot do interfere with what you can do," from John Wooden, okay? And I'm an old sports enthusiast, but the thing I love about this little saying, it's kind of what I've always done my career on, is that we want to make sure that we're constantly looking at what we can do and not trying to get into that part that what's going to, what we cannot do interfere with it, okay? There's going to be some things we cannot do, and if COVID stays constant like it is, and I'm sure you're going to have more information on that, then obviously adjustments are going to be made. We may not be able to do, uh, excuse me, no, I can't. I feel like I'm part of the team now. Anyway, so those type of things, we'll have to have adjustments depending on how they have to do deployments, stuff like that. All of that's going to be part of this process. If COVID wasn't here, it looks like a whole different animal, okay? So you as board members, I, I just ask that you think about that as your team goes through. Uh, do you have any questions?
To hit on the monetary part up again, that was per three thousand computers. That wasn't what I maxed out. Don't, don't we need seven or eight or nine thousand?
Sir, I don't, I don't think I follow your question.
That, 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 uh, up there first, that was per, that price was per three thousand dollars.
Yes, it was. Yes, sir.
Only three thousand. So that was one, a million, hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars per three thousand.
Yes, sir.
In our case, not three.
Yes, sir. The biggest is fifth grade through twelfth grade.
Well, four, okay.
So.
The three thousand, though.
Three thousand.
Through twelve.
I mean, how many, how many total computers are we looking at?
That's a, that's a decision to be determined. If we go younger, with younger students, um, we'll have to talk through the type of devices.
I mean, I, I thought, I thought we had somewhere in seven thousand students.
We have fifty-two hundred total students.
In the county.
In the county.
Okay.
But kindergarten, first and second grade would not probably want, we wouldn't want to use a Chromebook with them. I think maybe a touchpad if we wanted to go digital.
And you might only, some schools, especially in younger grades, two classrooms share a computer, meaning, you know, they do that. So one of the things I would say is we were able to do this, remember, this is on our strategic plan. We were really only able to implement this, this early in our strategic plan because of COVID funds. What we'll have to be very careful to do in our budget moving forward, which she has pointed out, is these devices have a five-year lifespan, but we can't wait till year five to begin replacing them because then we'll have three thousand at one time. So if even next year's budget, we need to start thinking through what is the grade level that will get the new devices and some of the older devices, maybe we can push them down. And then when you look at what it costs for the gaggle and all the other things, we'll have to determine what is the reoccurring cost that we'll have to make sure we have in our budget e- every year to continue.
That's not a real, that's not, that, I thought, I took it to mean that was a yearly cost on all that security. It's not.
But so there's a five-year.
I agree. At, at, that cost per year.
Correct. Well, but, but here's what you can do. We talk about cost of ownership. So when you figure that, and that's one of the things that Bradley and, and his team can do, when they look at that, they'll figure that cost of ownership based on device. So you would divide that by the devices that you are using, and then that would be your total cost and what other things you have to have on security. So as a board, when you start looking at that, you want to look about, okay, so if you do it over that time, you're not going to replace three thousand devices because you're, no board's going to be able to come up with that every year. And if you didn't have the COVID funds this year, it probably wouldn't be as easy. So you want to have, uh, like in our case, we're, we're looking at, uh, a, a certain amount per year that we would spend, and then you set that timeline to say, okay, we're placing, if we're placing these students, we're placing these teacher machines. If we're placing these students, placing these teachers. That way, they're constant in a rotation, and you don't get behind where you have to do these large. Now, I'm not going to lie to you. There's costs there, okay? But as long as you figure that out and you do it in a slow, you know, and you got it over that time, most school, most school districts can work that out pretty easily. Uh, every school district's going to have to probably do that because of, because of COVID. Almost every school district's doing a one-to-one program now of some type. They, they don't have a choice. It's either that or paper, and paper's going to cost you a lot more money in the long run than the machines are if you really did the math. But people don't realize that, and time and labor too. So just keep that in mind.
We did go ahead and pay for the gaggle for five years while we had grant money to do it. So that will not be a recurring cost for the next five years. That's the most expensive part of that, that annual cost. Um, so any other questions for Jill? If you don't care to keep, I've just got two slides here, and I'll let you click some. Um, we just wanted to talk about our timeline for the virtual school, which has, um, been, like she said, an ever-changing situation. Um, so go ahead to the first slide there. This is our proposed timeline that we would like for you all to consider tonight. Uh, we started with our training for teachers on the Google, uh, platform in August. We set an initial deadline of August fifth for students to enroll in virtual school. Um, however, given some of the circumstances that we've already run into, we've kept that open. Students can still enroll in virtual school at this time. Um, our in-person students' first day of school was last Friday. Um, so a week into the school year, we've already had, you know, we've already had a few situations that have caused students to choose to go virtual even though they wanted to come in person, whether it was because of a family member getting sick or whatever. August seventeenth is when our EdNudity will go live with our Monroe County students and teachers. That has been a, a pretty slow process for us, and we've been, um, struggling to get everything worked out with EdNudity on time to start our virtual school on the twenty-fourth, which was our original plan. So today, finally, we got to secure our training for EdNudity for August the twenty-fourth. On that date, all teachers will get trained on how to use that platform. So our proposal will be for August thirty-first and September first to have our virtual school orientations, and those will be customized for each school by teacher teams and principals. And then to start with, on September first, with virtual students to complete their orientation, take their beginning-of-year assessment, learn the procedures, and start practicing using EdNudity for their lessons. And then on September the eighth, students will begin working fully in the EdNudity platform. Dr. McClendon, do you want to? Dr. McClintock, do you want to add anything to that?
No, we've done this, as she kept telling us over and over again, um, one of the things that we're asking tonight is that our teachers don't need to try to teach and then take a three-hour training. So, one of the things we'd like to do is have a virtual learning day for our children, a remote learning day for our children on August the twenty-fourth. And that, uh, our teachers, we, we use one of our stockpile days. We'll get permission from the state if y'all approve tonight. And that way, teachers can come in in the morning, they can take their training for the two or three hours and then they can start to work in the Edgenuity system and set up classes and make it, make assignments. Uh, we wanted to do it starting next week, but we are going to have to push back our start date from August the twenty-fourth, which was when virtual school was supposed to start, to August the thirty-first, just because they had to get the PO. Then there was a thing where they needed a tax form. And then they, as a company, have been overwhelmed with people using their particular platform. And so, we're just asking for that tonight.
So, there may no students in school on the twenty-fourth?
No, sir.
We just, it's so important that everyone is comfortable with the system. We want it to be a smooth rollout rather than teachers feeling insecure about how they use the program. Uh, it's, we want it to go really well and we just know the training is very important to, to make sure that it goes well.
If I could say something about that as well?
Sure.
If we try to do training after school or on a weekend, there are always going to be teachers who have a conflict, they have children, they have, um, sports that are going on with their children or their families. And by doing it this way, we can focus it all in one day when everyone can be there.
Go ahead to the next slide. So, just briefly, the expectations for our virtual school. There will be learning engagement required every day. We want the students who are learning virtually to still feel as much a part of their school as they would if they were in the building. Now, we know there's nothing to replace a personal connection with a teacher. You know, Jill mentioned that earlier, nothing is better than that. But in the virtual platform, we still want students to feel connected and for them to have a personal relationship with their teachers. So, schools and teachers will set the daily schedules and require check-in or attendance check. That's gonna depend on the teacher's schedule for the rest of the day. Uh, in some cases, the teacher will be dedicated to virtual students and in some cases, it will just be part of their workload. Um, so, we'll have orientation presentations developed by each school. We have a template for that that we're gonna share out so that the schools will know what all needs to be included in that. And it'll just be a virtual open house where teachers go over the expectations, the rules, the daily schedule and what, what the requirement will be to be counted present. Uh, if students don't do their daily attendance check, then they are absent. And they would have to either have a parent note or a doctor note or it would be an unexcused absence, just like if they were in regular school.
And those guidelines have been determined and set by Tennessee Department of Education. They have said these are things that you would have to do. Uh, Dr. Strickland has another success this, this week because our plan that we turned into the state, the CLIP, actually was approved.
I have a question, like, just talk about those kids that get quarantined or maybe longer than fourteen days because another family, same family. Are they gonna be able to jump right into virtual or how are they gonna do their student life?
Those children will actually be what we call remote children. They won't actually go into virtual school. So, you know, if a child used to break their leg and you know, your stu-, your ch-, your parent would give assignments? The teacher may talk with the parent and say, would you like for me to give some assignments in virtual school? Or they might just email the assignments or put them on a jump drive or actually go to the packet system for those children who don't have this. Many of the students who are in traditional setting may not have access to the necessary requirements such as internet and computers. So, though the state of Tennessee defines that sort of as being a packet district or packet student, that student will receive a packet. So, it would have to be individualized between them and their teacher.
Okay.
Now, if a, if a student goes home to quarantine and their parents decide they're uneasy about the situation because maybe they have a health condition and they wanted to try in-person school, but maybe now they're less comfortable with it and they want to stay in the virtual, then they can apply. And, and then we'll check their, you know, their credentials to make sure they qualify to be in the virtual school and that would be appropriate too. Um, and we will, again, going back to what Jill said, we want to keep a check on this and make sure it's working. For example, we'll be checking on the, on the virtual instruction and then our district supervisors will be checking in with principals to say, what's not working? Are the students at home getting enough instruction? Are they getting enough assistance? Are they keeping up with the students who are in-person? Because the goal is to replicate that school day as much as possible. So, we want to be very diligent about maintaining and monitoring of that and if we need to change things, then we'll change things. We're learning as we go with a lot of this. So, um, go ahead, Jill, just the last slide.
I'll just go to the next one.
Yeah.
One, one other thing about that and just keep this in mind, there's a lot of guidelines that's been set by the state of Tennessee that we have to follow. Attendance law, which is six and a half hours for, uh, first grade through twelve for instructional day and then four hours. And if you stockpile days, you gotta add another thirty minutes to that. So, that's seven hours, both Monroe County and McMenon have that deal. And so, you know, parents are, that, they get confused by that because when they go to school, they go for that line. But they're like, well, my kid doesn't, you know. So, those types of things are all types of things that you have to work when, when you get parents into virtual school, no matter what platform you're using. So, just keep in mind as you guys are, because you're gonna hear, you're gonna hear the good, the bad, the ugly and the great. Okay? That's what board members get. A lot of times, you have some people like to always bring you the bad before they bring you the great, right? So, I, I just...
Or they forget to tell you the great, when it gets great, they don't mention it.
So, I, I, I really want to stress because I've worked with a lot of districts on, with different parts of deployment and different parts of, even in virtual platforms like this, that just keep in mind, there will be some hiccups, okay? There has to be. Because when you talk about doing this many people, you think about getting all parents trained and those kind of things. And I'm gonna tell you from experience, I just, I just did all the training for my district on that. And the reason I did the training is because we wanted consistency about our message to parents. But, you know, you still have parents, well, I had to, you know. All of that stuff is gonna be part of what they have to work through. Part of just that your, your administrative team and your leadership of Dr. McClintock has been fantastic and I see that they'll work through this and, uh, get through this in a, a really good. But I, I just want to make sure that you guys understand, COVID has made this a rapid response, okay? And that's where, that always you have to kind of back up and take a look at it. So, just keep that in mind as you go. And I, and I told my board that too. I'm not saying it just because I'm here in Monroe County. I told my board that too because I said, there's always gonna be, when you have to do things very quickly, even if you've got a good plan, there, you're gonna have to work through some things just because of what we're thrown into right now. And, and if you, if you probably experienced that, some of you in your jobs and people you've been dealing with during this COVID crisis, so just keep that in mind, please.
Any other questions?
How many students are K through two that we're not buying for?
We have about three hundred fifty to three hundred seventy-five students in each of those grade levels. So, that'd be around a thousand or so students.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So, we do need a motion.
Let me ask a question here. But, uh, uh, I, I saw on television today about, uh, ca-, uh, cameras in classrooms. Is that, that's real expensive, though, cameras in classrooms.
We have ordered, we have ordered, and Bradley, will you take this question about the cameras and you ordered them?
Sure, we've, uh, we've ordered, uh, three hundred webcam for the teachers to use if they want to do remote, any kind of remote instruction. Uh, they're on orders, let's be sure the first week of September.
So, what that would look like, Mr. Upton, is let's just say in the virtual platform, the students didn't understand the concept. The teacher could say, you guys are in my, uh, planning period at, at one-thirty, you are required to sign on and during that twenty minutes, I'm gonna reteach this lesson. Or, I'm gonna take myself teaching this lesson and I'm gonna send you guys a video. Or, none of y'all understand this, so tomorrow during class time, you're going to have to sign in and watch as I teach this lesson. That's called synchronous instruction, that's the word the state uses. I don't sometimes like using those words because a lot of people don't, especially parents, when you say synchronous. Uh, I know you, board members, have heard that before. Uh, and we've been really stra-, that, they've been really stressed that if that seems to be, that's where we need to go because, again, they want it to be as close to, those kids do not need to feel alienated. And one of the good things about this plan is they are, they answered a couple of times. We want this to be as close to what they would be, so they're still part of that school. They still feel part of that because at some point, they're gonna come back to school, okay? And so, when that is, nobody knows, but that's the, that's the most important thing here. So, the more that they can make them part of that homeschool that they're at, when I say homeschool, the school they're normally enrolled in, that, that, that's gonna be a plus in this, uh, this environment. Because then that way, they feel like they're still part of the school even though they're in remote learning. And they're about, are we at twenty-four percent now?
I think so, I think that's right.
I think we're at twenty-four percent. Just for our students are, uh, in virtual, have enrolled in our virtual school. And that's, that's close to state average. Most of the states have been seeing anywhere from twenty to twenty-four percent of their population that's doing that. So, if you talk to most of the schools around you, uh, I'm part of a pretty large organization and we talk, thing, I've talked to some school districts out of state. That's what they're seeing in remote, if they're not already starting remote completely. Because in some states, they're having to, and I guess you've been hearing about Georgia. So, you know, a lot of, and some schools near, not too far from here, are doing remote for a few weeks with everybody and then trying to come back to school. So, they think these, you know, so, you're gonna see all kinds of different examples and really just depends on how that team is handling that, whether it's gonna be successful or not. There's not one, one type fits off. You know, you gotta fit what your students need, as all of you know. Because if you were the board members, you weren't here to be, uh, be pro kid. So, the twenty-fourth.
So, you need a motion to, to say the kids will take a weather day or whatever.
It'll be a remote learning day. So, we'll still expect them to work that day from home. It will be just a loss day, but they won't be present that week.
I'll make the motion that we allow the kids to be on the twenty-fourth and the teachers to get trained.
I have a, I have a motion in second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? And the ayes have it. Eight, thirteen, fifteen, A. We need to... Probably post an ad in the paper for our school board attorney. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. Do we want to run this starting this weekend, so probably the twentieth? That'd be about five days? And do it in the Chattanooga, Knoxville, McNeen County and Monroe County papers?
Mm-hmm.
That would cover each Tennessee pretty much.
Yeah.
Loudoun, you said Loudoun? Loudoun?
Loudoun should get Knoxville, Knoxville, they should be able to get, we could do it in Loudoun. I mean, do they have a paper in Loudoun?
They have, they have something on here.
I feel, I, we're, we're gonna be the director, so if we get D and N County paper, I hope when we advertise, we have, those people in Knoxville, Chattanooga, it, we could, it's okay.
I think it, I think it does, yeah.
I, I'll let you know that.
Okay.
Starting twentieth, Monday through Friday? What, that you signed?
I would probably try to get it in this weekend's paper and then stop it on the...
Stop on the twentieth.
On the twentieth. That's about five, five days worth.
When you checked the policy, didn't you, Sonia, that it just, cause we just have to get the word out? We don't have to bid on it, maybe?
Yeah, it's on two cornrows sticks and a label, professional services, yeah.
It's a professional service and I did call, um, Ben Torres and ask him the question. And he said that we needed to, um, interview, get people's qualifications and, uh, and go from there. Uh, he also said that if, we would like for him to, that, uh, if we forward that to him, he will let the people in this region, the attorneys that work with school boards in this region know as well.
We also, it's, it's on the internet, our internet here, too, so...
What's our deadline for application signing?
I'd say, well, we'll run it till the twentieth, I'd say the twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Of everything, all the applicants, I think that are gonna get the licenses, you know.
Excuse me, Sonia, is there, is there a legal requirement that you open it up region-wise first? I mean, it seem like we have, uh, local people in Monroe, McMenon County right here, burgers. I mean, is there, is there a legal requirement that requires you to open it up?
So, when I talked to Ben Torres, of course, you always want things to, uh... Let me go back, when I first came here in this community, teachers and other people said, I never had an opportunity to bid on that job or to know about that job. When I knew anything about the job, they had filled it. And so, one of the things I did was every job that we have, and it wears the principles out, unfortunately, we posted and we interviewed by committee, even if there's only one applicant. Because I don't want us to give the perception that we're cherry-picking people for a position. So, one of the things that Torres, Ben Torres told us was that if you do it this way by posting it, you never have anyone come back and say, I wanted the job. There have been several people who have already spoke up and said, I would like to have that job. So, I don't want us as a board, especially when we have an attorney going out and a room full of attorneys who may want this position, to seem like we did anything to cherry-pick.
Well, that, that's what I'm talking about, it's much like the insurers, uh, you know, we have, and there's three, there are three counties right here around us, seem like, uh, Don, we speak. And I'd prefer to have someone local here versus Knoxville, Chattanooga or whatever, uh, give them the first opportunity and then maybe open it up to Knoxville, Chattanooga.
So, those people could apply. So, so for instance, there are, uh, Loudoun County has a very good attorney. Uh, so does probably Linnor City, so does probably Maryland. I would think all of those people should have an opportunity to apply and then as you interview or pull out, you may want to say, hey, here are the five people you would like to choose. But I don't want to get in a slippery slope of, uh, cherry-picking because what if one of these hotshot attorneys say, uh, that wasn't a good process? I think I'll sue them.
Heck, you can sue for an application for the job. I mean, you can sue for anything, I understand that.
Yeah. We, we just need to do a good job in our community just seeing that we're doing things fair and right.
We're advertising here too, I mean, we're advertising, they're gonna fly.
Well, I, that's why, you know, we have a couple of local papers. Why not start there, then expand out unless there's a, a legal precedent says you have to open it up? I don't know.
There's not anything...
Well, you certainly want to get somebody that's schooling, school law too. That's, that's the big thing.
Well, that's something that, that's an ongoing process. Anyone would have to learn, like any teacher, any, any attorney anywhere.
Well, I would say, now, let, let me say this, given COVID-nineteen and give us some of the things I have on my desk right now, we are going to have to have someone that is extremely familiar with school law. So, when we call over to T S B A or TOS or Chuck Hagel person, they are able to tell you Tennessee code annotated, they're able to rattle it off, they're able to keep you out of situations. We need someone who is familiar with school law, is familiar with schools and how that works. This is not a position, given the climate in twenty-twenty, to learn on the job.
I understand what you're saying. We have an excellent resource in T S B A to aid us through whoever that person may be. We don't know who that is.
But I don't think I should, I don't know that I should frequently email T S B A as many times as I do. I think...
So, let me say, can we advertise it in all the papers I suggested? Plus Monroe County's also and the buzz and the internet here and our Monroe County school website.
And I will take it sometime, you, I'll try my best to get it in these weekend editions to the big papers, but sometimes it is a lengthy process, which is at least a day or two process. So, if I cannot get it in the weekend, I will...
Can you give me the Monday's paper?
When it will start then.
So, if we could run it Monday through Friday, the seventeenth through the twenty-first.
They don't hit the weekend paper, does it? Saturday, Sunday paper? Does she go back to the twenty-third? Just say, some people that...
Close it up.
The paper, they just may get the weekend paper and not get the daily paper.
Yeah, a lot of people just buy the Sunday paper. So, it needs to end this...
When we advertise for, for the director's position, when you advertise with these big papers now like Knoxville and Chattanooga, they knew a lot of theirs done online as well and they still print a paper. When you find ads from them, I think their minimum, if I remember correctly, was you had to run it two weeks, no matter what. That was like a minimum that you were running. But I'll have to go back and put it through all that, so you can't just say, you know, like you used to do, I want to run it for three days, definitely do that, it has to be, it was either a seven-day or a fifteen-day minimum. But I'll have to go back and...
Well, if we did a seven-day, that would get a weekend, no matter where you start.
Right, yeah, either one of those, you would get.
Yeah.
And then, and like in Knoxville and Chattanooga.
Do you need a motion for that?
I think I got a motion and a second, we're in discussion.
Are we gonna, we need to get those forwarded to our board email as they come in?
Would it be better to do that or wait till she gets them all in and then send them out to us?
I, I would just like to go ahead and get them as they come in.
We could do that. You know, last year, last time we had problems getting them all in, so I didn't know.
You should, you emailed them as they came in tonight.
Yes, yeah.
I like that process better too.
That would, you can, you can as they come in.
That would be fun.
And though when I see what you're saying, we do have some great local attorneys.
Well, we, uh, local, I'm just a big believer spending money, our taxpayer's money spent as local as, as possible unless there's a legal prejudice.
We do.
But Doris, you've been doing this heavy years, twenty something? That's older than I am.
I don't think so.
You didn't get that gray hair in twenty-four years.
The problem, but the things that we're faced with legally, and I think Doris could speak to that, is very different than what it was when you started.
Yeah.
Is that not correct?
Yeah.
The things that you can be sued for now
Yeah.
are very, very different from when she started twenty-four years ago. I'm not opposed to anyone, but I'm gonna be very open to this board. I'm gonna be very transparent with this community. I'm gonna have to have some help legally. COVID nineteen is going on.
Yeah.
And we, and we are having situation after situation. We do not need a lawsuit because we were negligent in making sure we have correct and appropriate legal representation. You're opening yourselves up for a lawsuit if you don't have somebody that understands the special nuances in school law.
And Doris, who had it before you, Curwood, Curwood Whit, yeah, he's a thorough judge, ain't he?
So, can we close our patients on the twenty-third?
He's a pedophile.
We have, need to have them all in here by the twenty-fourth.
And do you want to go ahead and set a, a workshop or something to start school presentation?
Well, I don't want you set a workshop for the twenty-sixth on a Wednesday night, six thirty.
What time, six thirty?
Six thirty.
That's fine with me and that, that baby can tonight. That baby can, I won't be here, 'cause she gets to have me up there with her, so. I'll have a calendar ready. So Wednesday, August the twenty-sixth, that's my question.
Six thirty. Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? The ayes have it. Oh, business. Mr. Carroll, it's yours.
Um, back again, right?
Yes.
Um, so what we have here, I've, uh, everybody should have a handout, um, and basically it's exactly what you're gonna see on the screen behind you, um, or in front of you depending on where you're sitting. And so, uh, we've put together just a small presentation. It's just, I think, six slides is all that it is. So I'm gonna do my best to get us out of here by at least, uh, nine, nine-thirty, um, so. Alright, so let's, let's see if I can, right, let's see if I can get this thing to work here. I'm pushing buttons and it ain't working, so. What's wrong?
You probably have unlocked the clicker to plug in and switch out.
Click, 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 click. Yeah, you just, this, I, I just tell you to go. Let's go, next slide. Alright, so on the first slide, as you can see, all we did is, and again, I don't want to, um, read all this information to you, I don't guess. Um, do you have that in front of you? Uh, but just real quickly, um, I was tasked to look into repairing and replacing of our bleachers after we had them inspected and found out that we were, uh, not in code. And as, uh, Dr. McLennan has already said, we have to be very careful, uh, with what we do now, because people are very, very sue happy and everything. So we wanna make sure that we do the best that we can to make sure that our kids are provided a safe, uh, a, a safe place for athletics and also a safe place for learning. Uh, I've reached out, I've actually reached out to four and I've got listed three because I excluded one of those companies, because it was, it, it, it was a train wreck from the beginning and I, I, I didn't wanna have any more dealings with them if it was that rough, just doing inspections and that much mischievousness and different things going on, so we, I excluded them. Um, and as you can see on the next point, after inspection reviewing, all three bleacher companies recommended replacement with aluminum instead of wood on the basis of long-term durability and weatherproofing. Also, there is no official bidding process. None of that's been initiated and no contract has yet been awarded. Um, if you'll go to the next slide, please. Uh, out of the three that we have, um, this company, Mr. Sean Yates referred me to this company and so I reached out to them. And I began to talk to them and they are a company that uses, um, NASCAR stadiums, different ball stadiums, different things like that, that have, that are tearing out their alumining, their aluminum bleachers and going with more of this stadium style seating, the actual seats. And so they go in and basically get this stuff at a very, very good cost. It's in good condition. Uh, you know, they, they cull anything that is bad and keep all that is good. And then they find people like us that are in need, uh, that, that can use these things. They come in, uh, build your new bleachers with this used aluminum products. So your pros and cons are on the next three. Uh, one thing that is, is very nice about this particular company is you can see on the first top left-hand side, in-house financing option. The owner is interested, uh, in helping us out and is willing to, uh, to send us payments over three years, twenty percent down. Uh, and you can see that, so that, that does make it very, very nice. Um, also, there's no added cost for demolition, uh, whatever they decide, whatever that we tear out or they tear off, the wood, uh, anything that is bad that they remove, we just go in and take it over and then, uh, and discard of it, so there's no cost. And your seating capacity stays the same, so it's a one-to-one change out. Uh, your cons for this is of course that they use, they use used materials for their, their, the, the seat treads, walking treads, all those things. Um, they do use our existing structures, which some of our structures are pushing forty, fifty years old. Um, and it only comes with a one-year warranty just for labor. So then, if we look at the next company, and we can go through this and then we can, we can talk about some things. Hey, see, back up, you went too far. One more, yep, right there. So you got bleachers and seats, our next one. Uh, pros for this one, again, and, and all of these, when they leave, will be code compliant and ADA accessible. Um, so that, that's very, very, very important for us moving forward as a school system. Uh, warranty for this one, this is a pro, you get five years on materials, three years on finish and one year on labor. Everything is new, nothing is reused, uh, and there is options, uh, to decrease seating capacity depending on the budget. So you can go with a one-to-one replacement, for example, Sequoia High School, uh, football visitor side seats, uh, two hu, uh, let me think, uh, it's ninety feet long. Hit seats, uh, close to, I think it was four hundred or five hundred, I think is what it seated, uh, somewhere that, you can cut it in half and you can save money. Same thing for Telico High School, same thing for other places. You can do that if the board chooses to do so, to do so. Or you can leave it as a one-to-one replacement. That's why I made sure and put that in there. The cons, uh, there's extra cost for demolition and site work on this particular company, on the larger sites. Uh, we will ha, that will have to be outsourced, the removal, uh, the, the land preparation, so to speak, it's gotta be on a level, flat, uh, uh, surface. Uh, so that would be at Sequoia High School, Telico High School, Telico Junior and Vaughnore. Also, the financing potential, uh, through this company as well, is through a third-party, uh, lender, uh, and it's just a longer debt structure over seven years. Um, on the next one, which is Toadvine, and, and these were listed in no particular order, so I just, I just put them in as I, as I came to them. The pros for here, again, code compliant, ADA accessible, the same on the warranty, five years, three years and one year. Uh, same again, all new bleachers, uh, same again. On the pros, options to decrease the seating, uh, depending on the budget. Uh, cons for them, extra cost for demo, again, uh, on the site work for those four, for those, uh, uh, five sites or four sites, Sequoia, Vaughnore, Telico and Junior, uh, Telico High School. The demolition, and I, I, I should've put that on the pro side, but for them, they do a turnkey project. So they will handle all demolition and rebuilding in, in one stop. Uh, finance again through the third-party, uh, uh, lender, um, longer debt structure over seven years. If you get to the last page, uh, this is where it all gets down to the nuts and the bolts. I had debated about putting prices on here, but we, I mean, price is something that we have to consider. I mean, I understand that we don't have a blank check. Um, people are not, uh, tearing down the finance department out there, just giving money to them on a daily basis. So we have to be really careful with what we do. So you can see from the first one, bleacher builders, and the reason this one is such, you know, you're looking at half cost of the other projects. And remember, this is them just coming in and replacing everything that we have with anything that is wood, uh, with aluminum and making everything except ADA accessible, uh, code compliant, taking care of everything. Uh, and that's your range. You're from one seventy-two to two hundred and two thousand dollars for that project. Bleachers and seats coming in at two seventy-three, uh, to four hundred and thirty-two thousand. And again, I put it in, it ranges, uh, from smaller capacity bleachers, uh, to a one-to-one replacement with ADA accessibility. Same thing with Toadvine. Uh, I didn't have their final numbers before the meeting today. They were still working on all that. Uh, it was very comparable. They were very close. They were then ten, fifteen thousand dollars of each other. And again, uh, waiting on their final prices, it's again, can be like both on a one-to-one replacement, uh, and with ADA access. So, with that being said, where we find ourselves, we find ourselves in a very, uh, very, um, tight spot, so to speak. Um, and I know that with our funding, uh, I know that we have no funding, we have nothing as far as the schools are concerned. Um, and so I'm not sure what we wanna do or how we wanna proceed. Uh, one of the main things that we need to figure out is, is A, we can look at those numbers, the two seventy-three to the four thirty-four, or even from the one seventy-two to the four thirty-four. That is your, that is your cheapest cost, all the way up to the most, one of the, I mean, we're talking Cadillac, you know, Monroe County getting on the chart with a Cadillac, uh, uh, setup. And so we can look at that and say, okay, as, as a board, as a maintenance director, as our school system, and say, do we have or can we produce, can we come up, how can we get this money? If we, if we come up and we say we can get this money, then we can proceed with a lot of other things.
Okay, so you freeze right there.
Okay.
And now I wanna turn over to Mrs. Hicks in the finance department. And can you talk them through what this process really looks like? So Phillip does the technical side of putting it all together, but to even run this entire process, it would have to go through Mrs. Hicks in the finance department. And she can talk to you about bids and how that would work.
I was gonna say that, technical for you. I think I took off that. Actually, please, you shouldn't have gotten the finances from them. Because if I want to disqualify every one of these, I can just qualify them on the base that you have, have not...
Preliminary quotes?
And now these other two companies, we can go again, so they can underbid the lowest one technically. And I thought we talked about that on the phone. Technically, if you want to go out and bid on this, and that's what you have to do, you do the specs. And if your companies, you write one set of specs and they all bid on it.
So you're telling me that we can't get quotes?
No, you can't get quotes, because you've got specific numbers here.
Okay.
And for a specific job.
That's good to know.
And you actually asked three different companies what they were charged to do this job for you. And you cannot do that. What you have to do is write the specs. You'll throw it out our bid, you'll advertise it, we will bid it all three up, we bid on the same job. And then you can have the opportunity to look at those bids and say, okay, this company doesn't have this specification. Normally what you would do is you would have a walkthrough, though, walk around at every one of these, and you would say, I'm in this bid, we want a, a price on it.
But now we can't do price?
Excuse me?
You said we couldn't do price?
On the bids.
Okay.
When you advertise it, and those companies, you say, you have to go through a walkthrough with me, so that you say, I'm gonna tell all of you the same points, I put bottom of the file in here.
So what we wanna do is give the board some sort of estimation call. How do we, how do we set that up?
Until, at the end of the bid.
You can do that, just very specific.
Oh, okay, so we should have just set a range?
We gave many the other day, uh, according to this, was an estimate of like four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So we just need to sit with that?
Leasing on that.
We can do that.
And, you know, that's your, apparently the four hundred and twenty was your high on it, and so I've got a leasing estimate based on four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. What you've done is done very specific here. And we'll have to write the specs on the schools or qualifications, what you want done there. And then have a walkthrough, your contractors walkthrough you.
Just like I've done for other bids.
Other bids, same thing.
Right, so I'm getting an RF, I'm getting an RFQ, a request for qualifications.
But you can't ask them to give your price on it when you get a quote. And, uh, they won't wait there. The finance company comes back in, and all bids, there are certain, there are specific things that they have to do. They have to furnish us insurance at certain level. They have to furnish us W nine, they have to furnish us a contractor's offices. There's a long way, as you go through the ratings. And, uh, then we hand those back on to you if they qualify. If they don't qualify, I don't even, open really, I don't give the price forward or anything. We just disqualify based on, if they don't give me one of those documents, I disqualify. We have them buy, you go through those and make your recommendations. At that point, you might wanna have a workshop. You might wanna say, okay, we can afford to bid this, or we can't afford to bid that. There are lots of ways to handle the cost of it, and at this point in the game, if you don't have it in your budget, leasing is about the only way that you can vote on this.
So would you talk to them about how the leasing would worry them?
About leasing, when you award the bid, this is how it works. We will give a leasing company, I don't care which leasing company it is. We have one that we use in the county, pretty much all the time, it's bank for. And so we have another one that we have to use for some of the big equipment, and the highway department is a different set of, of equipment. Bank for, the city line contacted me the other day and I said, will you give four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, give me a quote on that? And which they did. They, they gave a quote on it, two years, three years, four years, five years, six years, seven years, one on that. What are you costing on the annual payment? Four and a half, you make whole payment annually. If it weren't in your budget this year, and you all wanted to guarantee that, and I would have to have that invited, that you would allocate this certain amount every year to be paid on this lease payment. Bank for would go write a check for these bleachers whenever they had completed construction to your, uh, specification, you said, they'll come and see it. How about the bleachers? We don't even have plans till next year. First plan will be next year. We can handle it that way, a bunch of four, five thousand dollars in the work, and the leasing there then. Or you can just squeeze it out of your budget issue, if you want to get started this year. But the leasing company just goes and pays for the annual, and they like to hang this on the way away. That's all there's to it. He goes through the normal processes of, uh, the bidding process, of the bid process. Mr. Nelson, who's our attorney, goes over every bid tract that goes out of our office. We're not sure if they're in the files with the law. And he signs off on those, we're sitting down, we're sitting down. The only other thing to it, other than that, is for, uh, long-term financing. And with the next structure, the lady's now, I don't, I think that would be an obstacle for the company. It's just easier to...
So the reason we wanted the discussion is because we know, um, that lots of our bleachers, um, did fail inspection and they are closed for use. Uh, I know several, several of you have talked to me or called, just inquiring, you know, what are our next steps or what are we gonna do about bleachers? So I wanted to bring something to you guys to start the discussion.
Phil, can we use wood? It says recommended. It doesn't say that we can't use wood.
Uh, no, the code says that you can, um, in the ICC three hundred dash two seven, twenty seventeen, American National Standard for Bleachers. It does say that you can use wood. Finding someone to you, to do that is what the problem will be. Uh, out of these three vendors that I talked to, uh, that, they all said that they would not, uh, install that. Then in doing that, and I have one, uh, one of the vendors did mention to me the life safety code. Uh, I'm no, I don't know if it's in the life safety code or not, that, um, that they, uh, put a limit on it. Uh, I'm not one hundred percent sure on that yet. I will do my research and try to find that out for us. Um, so the problem would be finding, finding someone to do the install and then to, to make sure that when they do the install with the wood, of course, you've gotta put in your aisles, again, I don't know how all that works with the wood, with, and trying to mingle the wood and different parts of that together. So I don't know if it would end up being more expensive, and I do know that right now... And I do know that right now, that treated material is higher than what aluminum is right now, at this present time. I did find that out during this process.
And will Tennessee Risk Management ensure?
They, I, I talked to them today. I did call, call them, and I talked to Tom, who, who is over our safety and claims supervisor. I talked to him today, and he did advise me. He said, Philip, he said, look, he said, listen, let me just cut to the chase and tell you this. He said, those are your bleachers. They're your property. We cover. And he said, that does, he said, that means, he said, if you put aluminum on them, he said, if you put wood on them, he said, if you put concrete on them, he said, whatever you put on them, he said, we, you're still under our umbrella, so we, we cover you on that. He said, right now, you have them condemned, right? I said, yes. He said, so if somebody goes out there now, even though you have them condemned, and they're not supposed to be on them, and somebody falls and gets hurt, he says, we cover it. You know, but you've done your due diligence. You've closed them, you know, we're not negligent anymore, because we have made the good faith effort to close them down and to let people know they're not safe to be on, et cetera. So, there, there are some things in there that we, that we just have to be really careful on. And I'm, I want to do whatever that we can, and I hope that everybody in here knows that, that, you know, in my five years of being here, I have done everything that I possibly could to try to make sure that we get the best that we can for what we have. Whether that is following all the rules and legality from the finance department. And so, I've always tried to make sure and do that. And, you know, really, this is the first time that I've heard about not being able to get quotes or anything like this. So, and if I'm in the wrong, then I apologize, and, and we'll work on doing something different later. But, but it is what it is now, so.
Let me say that I'm, I'm not saying you can give anything wrong.
Right.
And intentionally. It's just that when you go and get specific bids, that's different than just a generalized part of it.
So, we can say that it ranges?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I, I thought it was a range. I mean, that's.
That's the one that I'm asking is that we can't do that, because technically, anybody that you pick from that, they're overdue. That's where this qualification went. And that's, that's part of my job, is buying, is to put those things out.
Absolutely.
So, that when you do that, and you have done a good job.
Yep.
Nobody's ever said you haven't done a good job. It's just that if sometimes if you recall Gail, or something, if you have a question like that, if you have a question, you can call us.
Yep.
Sometimes it's so traumatic.
Absolutely. I've sent you many emails and many phone calls, and as, as I have Gail as well, so.
And we appreciate that.
Absolutely. So, so I just want to make sure, again, I'm, you know, I just want to be here. I want to do the best that we can for what we have, whether it's wood, whether it's aluminum, whether it's concrete, whether we decide and say, you know what, hey, this, we can't afford it, we're going to tear them down. We're, we're going to do what we can to tear them down, and we're going to smooth it out, and we're going to sow grass, and we're going to tell people that they got to come and bring their lawn chairs, and, you know, whatever. I mean, just to continue to have the games and have people places sit. I mean, I, I, I'm ready and willing to do whatever we, you know, that we need to do to, you know, to do this and do it the best we can, so.
So, what is the will of the board and what does that would like for us to do next?
I've got a few questions. Okay, on this, the existing structures are okay. They did not condemn the existing structure, right?
Not as much as to what the, what happens is, let's, let's take, let's take bleacher builders, for example. So, they're going to come in and they're going to use the existing structure. So, when they come in, they will, when, when they begin to do their tear off and their, their rebuild, as they do this, they have a field engineer that works directly with them. So, they will be there on site as they're tearing off, and as they're looking, they're inspecting our structures. If they find things that are wrong, then we're going to have to fix that as we go along. So that when, when they get done, they will give us a certificate of occupancy and a, and a structural engineer's stamp of approval on a set of plans, saying that this structure, this facility is now safe for public use. So, that's how we get that. So, if it's something that we decide that the board says, you know what, we want to do this ourselves, we want to go with wood, aluminum, whatever that it is, then we'll have to hire a structural engineer to come on board. And I've already contacted our current architectural engineering firm, Upland. Talked to them, and I said, do you have somebody? And they said, yes, we have a structural engineer on board that we can bring in, can assist you. You know, of course, there's a fee with that, and that they would be there to make sure that the, the concrete was good, the bolts were good, the, the framing was good. And then, when everything was done, then it gets inspected, there's a stamp of approval from an engineer. We get a certificate of occupancy, and then we can put people on it.
And his fees are not included in it?
No, ma'am. He, their, their fees are not included in, in bleacher builders, in bleachers and seats, and Toadvine. That's all part of their, or I'm sorry, all of those include that. The, the, the stamps of approval, the certificate of occupancies, all those are included in these budgetary numbers.
That's a good question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a catch or something? You said your contractor was near Upland?
Yes.
You met Howard Upland on the bleachers?
No, ma'am. They, in the contract for Upland, that, it was in there as well, that they are a, for all other miscellaneous items.
So, you would just call them for technical?
It was in their contract. I just called for technical advice to do that with.
Yes, ma'am.
And you were being, and I'm asking this, you know, I'm completely over on bleachers, building the bleachers. You're probably the first person to say that. But, one of the things that I would question would be, would it not be better to just, would you have a longer life? I'm looking at longevity.
Absolutely.
To go in and just completely replace it?
Replace everything, start all new. You, replace everything, start all again.
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's what, and.
That would be my recommendation. That would be my recommendation, too, to, to put it out and see when the price comes back.
Yeah.
Just stack it out, and let's see what happens. And then, you can't do that, that we can hit all of the years out, and we can stack it again.
Yep.
And, and I, what we've done in the past, we put a band-aid on a lot of the time, and we should be putting band-aid on.
Yep.
I think I just said that.
I agree a hundred, I agree a thousand percent on that. That's why I'm here.
If we're going to do this thing, let's do it right. Let's not band-aid it on, let's just do it.
I agree a hundred percent.
With all that being said, I don't disagree with any of it, but number one, we don't have the money to do it. We don't, we don't have the money to do it. If we done it, it ain't going to get done this football season. It ain't going to get done. And third thing, I've never been to, and I've been to thirteen or fourteen different places, that the community didn't do these bleachers. And I've helped build thousands of them. And this problem has been coming for some time. And I, I know we don't need, I've ne, I've never, ever been to a ballgame, football game, especially, or baseball, or softball game, where the visiting bleachers are full. So, that hash thing, that, that's definitely an option. But, we don't have the money, we don't have the time to get it done. This is something that we've got to kick back to the schools and say, tear them down and keep people off of them. Keep people off of, of what you just said, Tennessee Risk Management. We say, keep them off of people, get on, we're still covered.
Yep.
We're good to go right there. Discondemn them and tell people.
So, one of the things, too, before we just throw the baby out with the bathwater, when we, when we talk about this, when she talks about a leasing company, could you tell us, or could you share with us, when you said lease, what that, that price looked like? Because some of the preliminary things we looked at for leasing were.
Four hundred and forty thousand.
On how much?
Like, four hundred and fifty thousand, five, a five foot.
That's to replace as is.
I see. I, I just asked for the price.
Okay.
On four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, if you ran it seventy-two months, scale on my calculator, seventy-two months. If you went ahead with that payment this fiscal year, it would be seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars per year. If you waited and made your first payment into the next year, it would be eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars.
And that's for seventy-two months?
That's for seventy-two months. Now, of course, it, it even went up as far as eight, four months. And we can shop it, we're like the cheaper inch trade. Leasing is normally a little bit higher than just a show company, it's just on point, four, four point nine hundred percent. The, another part is everyone hold that rest in mind, like, I wouldn't do that. It would take, and I asked Gail a question, too, because I have said all the things that you're saying when Philip contacted me. I said, how do we just nail her down? And I, and I did. I said this to him, we talked about it. And so, I asked Gail, can they do that? It would, and Dr. Pym would have to walk the cab to see where she had money before we could even put that deal out there. So, all of that has to be straightened out before we can go on, on that.
So, two things. My very first ballgame at Sequoia High School, I had parents, trust me, verify with Miss Tipton, who came and got me, and took me to the student section, and said, your kids are getting ready to fall. And I went and asked the kids to, to get down. And then, I came back to Philip, because I knew that playgrounds and bleachers were supposed to be inspected by state law on an annual basis, that's TCA. So, that is when, that is what caused us to initially, once I went into those, I went into Tellico Plain Junior High School, where my daughter was at a, she cheered, or whatever, Little League. And those bleachers were not right when I stepped up on them myself. So, that alerted me as a director, that's why you need to be everywhere, that we had a problem. And then, I asked him to go and have them inspected, because we knew that we had a problem, and we were taking on a great deal of risk. And especially when somebody points out to you that something is wrong. So, that's how we kind of got there. Now, why it was delayed all these years, I do not know, but it's just like textbooks and everything else, you're trying to play catch up. What I would say, though, as a part of the conversation, and she says, working with Gail, we have to be careful, because we know that we may have lost some employees. We also know that we need to be careful, because we are carrying many employees over our BEP. We also know that we have a school whose enrollment is way on the decline. So, there are probably things that are on the horizon in the next eighteen months to two years, where that funding might come up. Because you guys know that I tried to allow matriculation to take care of our BEP situation. That's why we are Robin Peter to pay Paul, because we know we have to watch every dime here in the district very, very carefully.
I know, DeWitt, you've been involved with replacing the bleachers in Sweetwater. And as the community has done that, and the investor side, we've noticed there are about too many over there. But, that's something that I've never known of a school board anywhere other than replacing bleachers. That's usually a community.
So, you're saying the community will come, and?
That's what I've always.
Not nowadays, Don, but they, they would thirty years ago.
I understand that, but, you know, as she just said right there, we don't, we've got too many other problems to deal with this. We do. If we start a program today, we can't get it finished this football season. We can't.
And it's also.
You can, you can lease seventy-eight thousand dollars, but if you cut that in high, it might be thirty thousand dollars. But, you have thirty thousand dollars if we cut all the existing bleachers in high, capacity wise.
So, what I guess, so am I hearing you say, what you would like to see is that schools or booster clubs take on replacement of their bleachers, and that not become a part of the board's debt responsibility?
Much like. Every, every county could do that, though.
You're, you're. I agree with that. It's much like when we done the football stadium in Sweetwater, or we done the softball, and John was involved with that, individuals took it on, it paid off, and the county took it over. I'm not saying they have to do it or can do it, but how can this body do it under our climate of losing teachers and not knowing? How can you do it?
What do you mean when you say lose the teachers?
Well, we lost four this year.
You mean, we, we didn't lose teachers?
We lost, there were four teachers' positions eliminated.
Yes, so we didn't lose teachers, because I kept, every teacher that wanted to stay, that principal wanted to keep. So, we lost four positions. But then again, according to the state and our average around us, we're above anyway, so we do have some movement in there. Now, I, I don't mind either one. It is the will of the board. It is my responsibility, because people would like to know as to what the board would like to do. I would also add that we can't do schools like we did Sequoia. Sequoia needed air conditioning in their gym. Sequoia went out as a school and financed or paid or the whoever, and then we came back and we started doing other things for other schools. So, whatever we do, I wanted to, I would like us to ask for it to be equitable. So, if we say we're not going to build bleachers, then we won't build bleachers. Again, I don't want us to have any favorites or cherry pick. I want us to be fair to all the students in Monroe County.
I have one more question, Philip. Okay, Weaver Player replaced bleachers through places we've done at the junior high. We've done it at the high school three years ago. We had people bring in boards, and we've replaced them. We had people up there happen. The question's been asked to me, this company that condemned them, is there any way that they can replace these boards to get us through this year, so we can have our games, use our bleachers? Because Tellico has people wanting to volunteer to come up there and do it.
Right.
Some said, you know, hey, I think we can find some boards. Is there a way that we can get it waived for a year or two to come up with the money?
No.
Or wait for this year, if we replace those boards this year?
It's, all right, so, so let's start, let's start with the, with the very bottom. It's, it's more than just the boards. Okay, so, you, the, the boards is what we see. That, that's what we see with our eyes. We see how that, how bad that is, all the gaps, all those got to be closed in, no more than four inches of a, of a thing, quarter inch on walkboards, et cetera. But then, you have to have a fence. The, the whole surround has to be covered with a chain link fence and securely fastened. The front walkway, the concrete walkway has to be redone, because it's, it's falling apart, and there's, there's big gaps in it, and there's offsets, all that has to be done away with and redone. Then, there would have to be a fence put up on the front. Then, when you close that in, because of the seating capacity there, you have to add, the, the front walkway has to be so wide, depending on the occupant load in the bleachers, because you've only got two exits. The exits are on each end of the steps. Then, you would have to either A, put in a, a handicap ramp on each end, or, or make that handicap accessible, or provide handicap accessibility seating there. If your ramp was wide enough, then you can stay with the egresses on both end. If your ramp, or if your walkway, I'm sorry, is not wide enough, then you have to have an extra exit path coming off of that front concrete walkway. Then, you run into the problem, if that is the case, then you're too close, because you can't get the six steps that it would take to come off of that three-foot-high walkway before you get to the fence of the football field. So, there is some, some things that have to be done, and it's more than just coming in and throwing some screws on some, in, in some boards and putting some boards on. So, all that would have to be done to pass code before we could legally put people on it. We can put people on it now, but it's, it's not legal. And so, all those things would have to happen at each of our locations to, for it to be right.
So, Philip, you're saying, if a community came in and fixed them up.
Yep.
They still could be condemned if they didn't meet that requirement?
Correct. That is correct.
But there's a chance they fit, and if it's done correctly.
Correct.
And we can save money, because we're in a crunch right now.
Yep.
So, on the high schools, Sweetwater's okay?
Sweet, Sweetwater has some repairs, and there're minor repairs. All together across the county, we've got about ten, ten to fifteen thousand dollars worth of repairs that are going to be made regardless, to what we already have that already meets code. Sweetwater High School, the home site at Tellico High School, the home site at Sequoia High School has minor repairs. Some of the other bleachers that, that met it, they have some minor repairs and things to be done like that. So, so there's going to be that. So, you know, yeah, you're looking at all the others, too, so.
So, Tellico's home site needs some minor repairs, as well as Sequoia's home site?
Yeah, and Sweetwater.
That's just football, it's not county baseball and soccer.
No, all, all the baseballs, all, all, all the baseball, the softball, and the soccers are condemned. So, I mean, it is, we're not just talking about football, we're talking about all outside bleachers, except Sweetwater High School's home and visitors, Tellico High School home, and Sweetwater High School home. Football. Everything else is condemned.
So, to move us along, would you like us to bring back some additional information? Or do you have additional questions, or y'all want to think about it, and we can just bring it up in another month? What, you know, what is the will of the board?
How about some additional information on maybe if we just get the things that we failed? If you can get us some quotes or prices that is legal on that?
So, didn't we have a quote on what it would cost to fix the parts that failed?
Yes, and this, this is, okay, so let's talk about that real quick. So, the repairs versus replacement. So, let's take, just right off the top of my head, one that comes to mind is Sequoia High School baseball. Sequoia High School's baseball, they've got two sets of ble, one, yeah, two sets of bleachers, one on the left hand, one on the right hand side. And those repairs, to make the repairs, to make those code compliant, were two thousand dollars. were two thousand dollars more than putting in two new sets. And that's the way it fell across the whole county. So, for example, and I, and I, and I told, I told, um, Sean, I, I told, I told Sean, and I told, um, um, who's the softball coach at Tellico High School? Is it Dawn?
Softball Dawn and Brooke.
Okay, so, so I, I, I told Dawn, because we were talking about it, Sean came to him and he said, "Hey," he says, "Man, we've got to do something about this." And I said, "Well, look," I said, "If, you know, if you wanna raise the money," I said, "You can, you can get what little bit you need for your softball field for about thirty-five hundred dollars." So I said, "Yeah, if you wanna, you wanna raise the money, then, you know, that's gonna be up to you and, and your, your, your sports club or whatever, or your parents or whoever. And yeah, you can purchase those and then thirty-five hundred dollars and you can have them put in," you know. So, so you're looking at thirty-five hundred dollars to purchase them, and it's about fifteen hundred dollars for installation, thousand dollars for shipping. So, you know, five thousand dollars, you can have a set of bleachers that the softball can use. And so, go ahead.
So it goes back to Mr. Reese's point that we just, I think his thought was to ask the individual schools and clubs to take care of it.
If they wanna do that.
Yep. But then you get to the high, then when you get to the football field, then you're talking eighty thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars for a set of bleachers to where I can raise fifteen hun, I can raise five thousand dollars in a season, but I can't raise eighty thousand, you know. And, and then, and then we look at the, if we're talking about equality or, or the, the equalness of it, you know, then, then is that a problem? I mean, like I said, I, I'm, I'm just here to do the best I can.
Can I get a motion that table this until next month?
Make that motion to table this for next month?
Second.
Motion and second. Any more discussion?
So if any people are sending me a specific request after you've had time to think about it or talked to people in your district about some options so we can be prepared to present all the necessary information?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Eight thirteen seventeen, Director School Board.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Okay, so this evening, and I'm sorry, we have been getting lots and lots of questions concerning COVID-19 and the practices. And I am answering you, but you guys know that my training and background is in education and academics and not in health. So tonight I have asked, uh, Dr. Stewart and Teresa Harrell to come and do a short presentation and be available to answer questions because each of you has probably called and asked or had constituents, twenty or thirty people call and ask you, "What's going on? What is your contact tracing? What is a close quarantine? Why isn't our child out of school?" Somebody positive. Uh, and I want you guys to hear from a health expert the actual answers to some of your questions so as you make decisions as a board, you can feel more comfortable. And I think that since they come, they were happy discussing with a little while. Just for sake of time, Ms. Harrell, if you, um, if you go to this home, you may have that.
All right.
The amount of times, what, what did you want to say?
Dismissed, no.
Okay, okay.
Um, thank you for having us, uh, Dr. McLendon. For those of you, if you don't know, I'm Teresa Harrell, and I am the Director at the Monroe County Health Department and also the Loudoun County Health Department. Uh, we have been, um, what we wanted to do is just briefly give you an idea of what we are doing as far as COVID with you guys in the schools. Uh, I'll be honest, uh, the last five months have been all-consuming, exhausting, and a lot of stuff going on. Uh, and Dr. Sturdivant can tell you that as well, too. We, uh, she's our medical director for the East Tennessee region. Well, the first thing I just wanted to tell you is just kinda give you an idea of what we're doing from the Department of Health with you guys in the school system. Uh, we have a plan. You guys had a really great plan that you rolled out for COVID-19 as far as when schools started back and what was gonna happen. The Department of Health had recommendations for the school system. So what we have done, I, I work hand-in-hand with Ms. Jackie, uh, when we discover or a positive case happens, basically, we have seven different things that we do. We start out, we ask Ms., uh, Dr. McLendon if she would designate one person in the school system to be the contact that I would be able to talk with and communicate and that. So we did that. Then, when the school system learns of a case, a positive case, uh, most likely it's gonna be from the parent. So, once we learn of that, then the contact person then reports that. Jackie gets ahold of that information. She tells me, a lot of times, what's, what's, we've already had to happen, we're only on day four, so, but we've already had a few situations, is the parent immediately calls the school, the principal, the teacher, or Jackie has a contact there at the school, and so then that's when all the, the tracing and, and all the stuff begins. Uh, then, what we do at the Health Department, if that child tested at the Health Department, child between the age of five and eighteen, then our nurse at the Health Department will call that parent and, uh, regarding the positive result, talk to that chi, or parent and ask the questions. Does your child ride a bus? Uh, does your, what, where was the last function? What was the last function that your child was at? And ask about siblings, household contacts, that sort of thing. And then she sends all that information to, we have a special school team that's been designated at our regional office, and that's called the investigative team, the school investigative team. Then what I do is I talk to Jackie and I said, "Okay, now we have this positive at X school." So she goes back to the school and gets all the contacts. And what is so great about your plan is the principals and the teachers are real, have it organized, so if they know, uh, assigned seating, you know, that little Johnny was in X class, and guess what? We knew that he was sitting, you know, around these four children. So those are considered close contacts. So Jackie gets all that information to me, then I send it on up to our regional health office, to that investigative team. And then at the end, and we haven't got to this point yet, but what, what will happen is I will get information back once all of those contacts are out of isolation and quarantine. Once they're out of quarantine, then I will get information that I'll share with Jackie and then she'll share with that particular school. So we've already done this this week, and it worked beautifully. It worked very, very well. So we were excited. I mean, we were going, "Yay, it's working." Uh, everybody was contacted, the contacts, and actually had a situation that worked great that everything was done after hours. So even after school was out, people, contacts were not allowed to come back to school, so, you know, we prevented some spread. The other thing that you have, and you have all of this with you, Dr. Sturdivant, I put at your, uh, at your place, this little handout that says, "COVID-19, what to expect after being tested." The reason I wanted to share this with you is when we test at the Health Department, every single person we test gets this little packet of information. We tell the person, okay, once they're tested, we say, "Now, you need to quarantine until your test results come back. Your test results will be back in two to three days. We're using a new lab out of Nashville, and the results are so much faster." We're just very tickled with that. I mean, it's, it's so much faster than what it was. But each person has this information as to what they need to do, monitoring their health, stay at home till they get the results. They also have, and this just shows kind of the assessment that we use, we also give them the HIPAA information, and then we give them the information from the lab. And basically, it's a very simple process. All they have to do is, is look it up, enter the, their little number that's on the barcode of their lab receipt, and they can check on a regular basis to see if their lab results are back. And then once they are, it'll pop up and you, they actually get a, a picture of the lab results. And a lot of employers want that, you know, to see if it's negative or positive. They don't have to. They do not have to have a, a negative test, uh, going back to work, different issue, but anyway. So, but anyway, I wanted to share these two things so that you guys would know that this process is in place and it's working. So we're really proud. We've done a really, uh, I feel like we've done a good job of doing that.
Okay, good evening. So, um, I'm Tara Sturdivant, and I'm the Monroe County Health Officer, and I do appreciate Dr. McLendon giving us an opportunity to speak with you this evening about, uh, the control of coronavirus transmission in, in your school. Um, the, uh, document I'd like for you to look at right now is, looks like this. It's been through several iterations, and it is the Tennessee Department of Health Recommendations for the Management of COVID-19 in Schools. So I've been through this document, um, twenty-five times, uh, so far, with twenty-five different schools, colleges, and universities so far, and I think I have two more to go, actually. I've always wondered how many, um, school systems we had in our fifteen-county region, and I'm finding out now. Um, um, this is not, these are not rules for our schools, they are recommendations from the Tennessee Department of Health. So the more, um, of these recommendations that our school systems adopt, we think the safer that our children and teachers will be. Um, so there are overarching recommendations on page two. Um, um, you can look for a fairly comprehensive list of, um, symptoms on page seven that, you know, the nurse is gonna be dealing with, where children are concerned, and COVID symptoms run the gamut. I mean, they're, the nurses are really gonna be challenged by this because, um, you know, COVID presents in adults like an upper resp, upper or lower respiratory tract, uh, uh, problem. In children, the most common symptom is abdominal pain. And if you've ever, you know, worked with children in health clinics, I mean, abdominal can, pain can be constipation, it can be because they're hungry, it can be anxiety, you know. So they're really gonna have their work cut out for them, uh, trying to figure out, you know, wha, what a, what they're dealing with when a child presents to the school clinic. Um, and then on page eight is really the, you know, the meat of the document, I think, because it, it's gonna be, uh, the Bible in terms of guidance to the school nursing staff, uh, in how they can allow a child or teacher who has presented with a COVID symptom to return to the well student or teacher cohort safely after they've been excluded with a COVID symptom. Um, the same guidance is on page nine, just in rubric form. Um, and I have encouraged schools to, um, put this out to parents. I think more information is better, honestly. Um, they might have a little bit of a problem kind of working through it to begin with, but if they look at it, look at it, look at it, um, you know, I think they can figure out, once their child has one of these situations, you know, they can, uh, figure out how, what they're gonna have to do, where the bar is for their child to get back into the well, um, you know, back into school in terms of, um, the required documentation, whether they're gonna have to have a COVID test and whether or not they're gonna have to see a provider. Um, the next document, um, you know, what we're asking, so we are absolutely underwater in terms of case investigations. There've been days that we have been five days behind. We've had twelve hundred cases in our electronic queue to be investigated. There've been days that we've gotten five hundred and twenty-seven new cases. We've only got thirty-five investigators at the regional office. Um, I mean, absolutely drowning in cases to the point that we've not been able to do contact tracing. I mean, I'm just being honest with you. All we can do is, is interview cases. We can't do contact tracing. Um, and we have never, never been in this position before, but it's the reality of where we are with this, with this pandemic. So we are having to rely upon the schools to assist us with this, you know, with this, uh, task. And so we're asking people who don't normally, um, practice medical epidemiology to get familiar with terms like quarantine, isolation, um, household contacts, um, quickly. I mean, facile, really, with the terms and, and to use those properly and quarantine people, isolate people. Um, so this, this sheet is, explains what we're doing, what your school, um, um, staff, actually, nursing staff and administrators are going to be doing, working in concert with the Health Department, because we do not have the bandwidth to do this ourselves. Um, we are only gonna be doing, we are only doing, it's not going to be, we've already started, because there are a lot of schools that have been in session for several weeks. I mean, Blount County, I think, was probably our first school that, that's, first county that started back. And I mean, the first week back, you know, teachers went back, they had cases, um, um, and we absolutely are having to rely on them. The only, um, organizations that we're doing contact tracing for are nursing homes, jails, um, healthcare facilities, and schools. So, um, but as Teresa, um, mentioned, y'all have already had some cases, and I think it's worked, I think it's worked very well. So, um, I think Dr. McLendon, so you've got the definition here, but I think Dr. McLendon was particularly, uh, interested in, um, kinda having maybe some back and forth about the definition of a close contact. Um, and, um, so that's, um, you know, just because we're in the room together, if one of you tomorrow is diagnosed with, um, COVID-19, I'm not concerned. Uh, that's why I try to stay away from everybody. Even though I have on a mask, I'm trying to stay away, 'cause I don't wanna be named as a close contact. I don't wanna have to quarantine. Um, um, so...
So would we maybe talk through, let them ask you a few questions, and then we talk through?
Yes.
So before I came in, uh, we have had a school who has sent a note home to every child. You're probably already getting texts and emails, or if you haven't, it will be. So talk to us about why that's not what we're supposed to do.
Yes. Um, so we know who is at risk. We know how coronavirus is transmitted. It's transmitted from droplets when I speak, okay, or when I sneeze. And we know how far a droplet spread just from talking. We know how far, um, I mean, they've done measurements on that, and, you know, the furthest that it goes, not sneezing, but talking, you know, it's gonna be under six feet. So that's the way that came up with that, you know, with that six-foot measurement. So six feet for longer than ten minutes. And actually, the CDC says longer than fifteen minutes. So the Tennessee Department of Health is, has a more conservative, uh, definition of close contact than the CDC does. So those are the only people that we need to be, um, concerned about a potential exposure. So that doesn't mean those people are gonna come down with coronavirus. That means they have had a close enough contact with a case of coronavirus that we need to, I, need to put them, you know, in a safe place to watch them to see if they're going to develop symptoms. Quarantine is another word, you know, a quarantine period is an incubation period, basically. Coronavirus has an unusually long incubation period. So, you know, when someone's quarantined, that means we think they may have been exposed, we think they've... we think they may have had a significant exposure, we don't know, but we think there's a possibility. So, we're going to remove them from the well student cohort and we're going to watch them for 14 days to see if they get sick. Now, you can't test your way out of quarantine. You can't get a test on day two that's going to tell you, you're not going to develop coronavirus on day 10. The only thing you can do, once you've been potentially exposed, is wait it out. Does that make sense to everybody? For some people, for some reason, people have a really hard time with that. They want to test out of quarantine or go see a doctor and find out that they don't have...
So, three incidences have happened. We quarantined a group of children where one's child, one child's parent tested positive. And instead of just quarantining the child, we quarantining the child and then everyone that had been a close contact with the child. Should we have done that?
It was the parent that was positive?
Correct.
No. And you want to know why?
Yeah, tell us all. I know, tell us all.
Okay. So, who do you, who do you quarantine? You want to quarantine contacts to the sick person. And the child wasn't sick. So, we don't con, we don't quarantine contacts to contacts. A contact isn't, we don't even know if that person's going to get sick or not. You don't know that until that person gets sick.
But it ca, it cannot spread if you're asymptomatic. What, what if that person is asymptomatic and hasn't come down with it yet? Can it be spread?
You, you, it can spread once that person becomes a case. But until they become sick with it, asymptic, asymptomatic or not, sick is sick. Asymptomatic means that you don't have fever.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So, you've not had a chance to get sick yet if you've just been quarantined. So, we're going to watch the asymptomatic person. At some point, it might be reasonable to test that person, but you still don't get released if you have a negative test on day 10 or 12.
So, a couple of other things that have come up in the committee, too, is, uh, some of our teachers, and maybe members of our children's field are saying, and go to court. And so, we said we can only practice music theory at this time.
Right. So, singing, uh, is a very, you know, you're projecting your saliva and your spit, your saliva, I should say saliva, because that's more scientific. The same reason we shouldn't be doing that in church, really. So, I mean, it's evidence-based, frankly.
So, other questions, I'm trying to think of some of the other questions y'all called or texted me about, but do you guys have other questions? Because I want you to get a medical expert.
So, let me mention one more thing, um, because this has come up with another school. Um, so, um, so, there is, so I have the authority to quarantine. Y'all are, y'all are asking people, please quarantine and please isolate. But if people don't cooperate with that, I have the legal authority to quarantine and isolate. So, that's under a health directive. So, I send people a legal document, a letter that says, I'm directing you to do X, Y, or Z. And I do that, I've started doing that with law enforcement. I do that accompanied by law enforcement, whichever, if they're a county resident, I do it with a deputy, if it's city, I do it with police, in whichever county I'm in. Um, and then, if I have issues with the health directive, then we make a date with a judge. So, there is Tennessee code annotated that supports me in my endeavors to protect the health of the public. So, um, unfortunately, uh, one of my schools had an issue with a teacher, believe it or not, not even a student, a teacher, that wouldn't go home, who had fever. So, um, if, you know, if that comes up again, I don't have a problem. Normally, when I'm going to court, it's over somebody with TB that won't take their TB medicine, or, you know, somebody that's HIV pro, positive, that's, um, feeling very loving towards people and not expressing their, their, not disclosing their HIV status. That's, you know, typically what I end up going to court over. But, um, I've made Dr. McLennan aware, um, and I, I'll also, I'll tell you this, too. I mean, we've been told by the local FBI agent, if a law enforcement officer, or a teacher, or anybody else gets coughed on by somebody that's positive, and it, it's not an accident, that's a federal charge. So, I mean, I've gotten, uh, an email from, uh, you know, from the agent in Knoxville. So, I hope, you know, people don't try to get cued in that regard, because I'm, I'm, I don't have any patience for that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if you've got fever and chills, you go home, you get tested, couple of days your test comes back, it's negative, do you still quarantine after you become fever-free?
Do you have your, um, look at page, uh, nine there, on your recommendations. Which one would that fall into, do you think?
I guess the report.
Right.
That's what I'm thinking.
So, return to school after fever is resolved without Tylenol or Ibuprofen and symptoms have been improving for at least 72 hours. That's when you can come back. And the, the, um, the school administration is going to need documentation of a negative COVID-19 PCR test, um, obtained after onset of symptoms. And they'll know that because they know when they sent you home, and they just need to be sure that the test is dated after you were, um, sent home. So...
So, then like, therefore, we're not, after 72 hours of fever-free, then they can come back to work?
Yes. Teacher or student, right.
Any other questions for Dr. Sturdivant? I'm sorry, it took us so long.
That's okay.
This was, it's so important, because I felt like they're asking questions, they're getting bombarded with questions, um, there are more questions that are going to come, and they really need to hear from a health expert.
Um, so, you know, excluding a teacher or student that has COVID symptoms is, uh, you know, a health urgency that needs to be done. Um, but doing the contact tracing, I really would rather that the nurse, the nurses be thoughtful about that. Um, it's not an emergency. Um, most people are, you know, develop, um, COVID, you know, four to five to seven days after exposure. So, you've got a couple of days. I'd rather be very thoughtful about the contact tracing and really look at who meets that strict close contact criteria, um, bef, instead of just, you know, wah, and send the whole, you know, close the whole class, because...
And I'm, and I'm going to have...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, uh-huh. Hold on. And I'm going to have her talk to principals on Tuesday at the principal meeting, because we have had, uh, Nurse Jackie to be the point person. She has spent countless hours, day and night, tracing, doing a contract tracing, and talking with Ms. Harrell.
And I think she knows what she's, I mean, I, I think she's got it, I really do.
But I think people, and please stand up and come on and say, I think people are not always following her. So, so, back to, this is a place where the micromanagement has to come in. We have to listen to what she tells us to do, whether you're a principal, a teacher, a student, a parent, whoever.
Um, thank you. Well, and I'm not sure, I, I know rumors have just been, uh, you know, gone crazy. Uh, if I understood you earlier correctly, I think I, I thought you said earlier that we have quarantined a child because the parents...
No, no, I was giving, I'm giving scenario that people have called board members or called me or others about.
Gotcha. Okay, because we have not.
I don't know that any of that has happened, but these are the rumors that they're getting faced with and people are calling me with.
Gotcha, gotcha.
No, I, 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 you know, pretty much what Dr. Sturdivant has says and what Teresa has said, we are falling to a T exactly what they have just described. Um, the nurses have been very helpful, but to be quite honest, I have been the person that's been fielding questions after questions for 12 schools. And, um, I feel like for the most part, the principals are doing a great job. They're contacting me, they're doing what we discuss. And I think the situation with the school, where several letters went out, it has to do with the term casual contact. Dr. Sturdivant, Dr. Sturdivant and I were talking before we came in, that I, I got that term, for, I didn't make that up, I got that term from another place besides the, the Department of Health. It was the Tennessee Department of Education, and I can find that and show that to everyone. That's not a made-up term, okay? So, that's what is on our letter. That does not mean that those kids need to go home. Now, Dr. Sturdivant and I have also talked about possibly changing to a different letter, uh, but we, we do need to let those kids know. The thing is, we need to let them know a return date, and that's what I have been trying to let them know, so...
A return date for casual?
A return date for...
For...
For a, for a close contact that had to be quarantined.
For a close contact.
If they have, don't have to quarantine, they're, they're not put out of school to begin with. And so, Dr. Sturdivant and I had a really good conversation out in the hallway about how we can make sure that parents are clear on what's happening. And so, but I appreciate you all, and please, if you all have questions or somebody, I feel like I do have a really good grasp on, um, quarantine and isolation and what that means. So, you are welcome to call me anytime. My cell phone is always on.
Because I have deferred to her. She is our point person. I don't even get involved. I try not to even hear the names of students, because HIPAA, please be very careful not to even discuss a child or an adult or an employee that may have a positive case or be in quarantine, because that is a, is most definitely a violation and is most definitely, uh, a legal, sueable offense.
Yes. I mean, I really think y'all got it. So, it's, it's getting it, get, getting the principals to get it, so...
Well, I want to really study this information.
Yeah. And I, I will say this, but I don't mean to sound like we're throwing the principals under the bus, they, they've worked very hard and very close.
Well, this is not, I mean, this is what I mean, trying to step into the classroom and know what I was doing. I, I mean, I, this is just not...
But they've been so good about just getting those, figuring out who it is, and like Dr. Sturdivant said out in the hallway, we're kind of having to do what they, they're swamped. So, we're having to try to pick that up, and it's not something we're used to doing.
We're very grateful for the help.
Yes, yes.
Couldn't do it without you.
So, but thank you, yeah, thank you, Dr. Sturdivant and Teresa.
Thank you, thank you.
Y'all call me if you need anything.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so, so we can wind them down, just, just because, uh, we need to celebrate. Uh, we did have the charter decision, uh, the letter come in about the charter decision. They did uphold, uh, your decision to deny the charter school.
That's fair.
Um, and to be honest, they were even a little bit more, uh, hard on the applicant than we were. So, they pointed out some of the things we did, but then they pointed out even more. So, um, they were able to, uh, in fact, make a recommendation to the board. Now, they were very clear that the board could. Uh, another thing that they pointed out was we do not have a school, uh, giving the correct terminology strictly, we do not have a school that is in the bottom 10 percent.
Priority.
We don't have a priority school. Uh, if one of our schools was to become a priority school, that is another ballgame. So, we need to be very, very careful with our schools in our district who are level one. Because if they continue at that rate or go into that bottom 10 percent, then when, when that charter or another charter comes back, they take it even more seriously, and sometimes even if you deny it, or the, or the recommendation is made to the state board, the state board may decide, never mind, we're going to let them try it anyway. So, we need to make sure that our schools stay in good standing. Uh, and then, our clip was approved by TDOE, and so, um, that means our remote learning plan and our CARES Act funding and all of that is in alignment. And as we close tonight, uh, we know that some of you will not be in body, but you will be in spirit, um, moving forward. I know that many of you have served for many, many years on this board, and just because you're not a part of this body, you still will always be an accountability partner for this board and this school district here in Monroe County Schools. It's all our jobs as community members to make sure that what we do with the funding and our future is our children. And without strong academics and strong athletics and being good stewards of that money, we cannot do what we profess to do, which is to be a school district. And I appreciate the time that I have had to work with you. I hope, like I said, that you will continue to be a watchful, uh, opinionated community member, uh, as you move on to other things. And so, for that reason, tonight, we want to honor you guys with something. Ms. Sonia Lynn, you have served as a board member from 2004 to 2020. We thank you for your service to the children and families in Monroe County Schools. Dr. Jason Miller, you've been a board member since 2015, and we appreciate and thank you for your service to the students and families of Monroe County Schools. Mrs. Jamie Harrell, you have served since 2012. You've been a board member from 2012 to 2020. We appreciate your service to the children and families of Monroe County Schools. And I think this person wins. Going to Madison, we appreciate your services. We may like today of how much education, accountability, and legalities have changed since you started in 1996. So, she wins. She has been serving since 1996 to 2020. We thank you for your 24 years of service to Monroe County School students. That concludes my direction support.
Do I have a motion adjourned?
I think so.
I'm ahead.
I guess missed.
Let us finish.